All right, good evening. It's December 9th, the day after the Rochester hometown Christmas parade in Rochester. I'm calling the Rochester City Council meeting to order. City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Sylvia?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Hauser?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
King?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Uh, here.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming out tonight. We've got a few folks gathered here tonight with us, which is wonderful. We're going to start out with some public comment. We've got a couple of presentations, so we'd like to start out with a presentation from Dinosaur Hill. I believe we have Nick Gatos here to fill us in on what is happening with Dinosaur Hill.
You're in conference room, I'll probably try and leave it under five minutes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm being a pastor, it was a pleasure. I want to begin by expressing our heartfelt gratitude for your support of our community restoration. The event was a tremendous success. Thanks in large part to Councilmember Trent's leadership and the hard work of the organizing committee. It was wonderful to have the City Council with us and celebrate with us.
And to contribute such a memorable, just such a memorable evening that brought our community together. Change is a natural part of growth, and after 24 transformative years, our Executive Director, Sue Neal, is moving on to other opportunities. Sue's leadership expanded our partnerships in the broader community, brought Dinosaur Hill into the 21st century with online registration and payment, and won numerous grants that helped establish a portable plantarium and a community garden. She's currently supporting the organization as interim Executive Director during our search for a new candidate. We expect to have our new Executive Director in place well before the end of the first quarter. Financial sustainability is central to our mission to serve Rochester residents effectively. And to this end, we have formed a board committee to review the structure of our agreement with the city. The committee plans to propose potential changes by the end of the second quarter. Additionally, we're expanding partnerships with schools, municipalities, and local organizations to increase programming and funding opportunities. By strengthening relationships with donors through targeted campaigns and enhancing fee-based offerings, we aim to generate additional revenue while keeping programs affordable and accessible. Our nearly $860,000 endowment is a cornerstone of Dinosaur Hill's financial strategy. A recently adopted investment and spending policy guides our use over these funds, ensuring a conservative draw of 3.5% annually based on three-year average. This approach ensures the endowment's longevity while supporting program expansion, educational initiatives, and unique resources like our portable plantarium. This strategy maintains flexibility to address emerging community needs while upholding transparency in alignment with board-approved policies. Dinosaur Hill's strategic growth focuses on initiatives that align with city priorities and enhance our value to the community. We're interested in exploring sustainability-focused programs such as composting and recycling workshops to support city-led initiatives. Securing grants for ecological projects that, pardon me, securing ecological grants that preserve biodiversity and stewardship is another priority. We're also strengthening our board by recruiting members with expertise in fundraising, marketing, and other critical areas. Finally, we aim to increase community engagement through events and proactive outreach that highlight the value Dinosaur Hill provides to Rochester residents. To expand our impact and support our mission, we're focusing on campaigns that emphasize educational advancements and program improvements. We're seeking sponsorships from local businesses to support both events and programs while also exploring new fee-based offerings aligned with Dinosaur Hill's mission. Additionally, we deeply value our wonderful volunteers and are committed to expanding participation by encouraging residents to contribute their time and expertise to support Dinosaur Hill's mission. Our partnership with Rochester Community Schools remains a cornerstone of our mission. We're committed to aligning our programming with district curricula to provide cost-effective, high-quality educational experiences for students. Addressing logistical challenges such as transportation ensures accessibility for all students. Additionally, we're strengthening relationships with PTA leadership and district administrators to adapt our offerings to meet educational needs. In closing, I want to thank you again for your ongoing support of Dinosaur Hill. Your partnership has been instrumental in helping us connect residents with nature through exploration, education, and recreation. With your continued collaboration, we're confident that Dinosaur Hill will remain a cherished resource for the community for many years to come. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Nick. Thank you for being here and your presentation. And I would just like to celebrate and congratulate Sue Neal on 24 years and wish her the best in her next professional endeavor. I know she has some exciting plans, so thank you, and thank you, Sue. And Councilmember Trent is the liaison. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, too. Yeah. Yeah, I worked with Nick for a couple of days last week, and I think you pretty, you can encapsulated it very well, and you summarized it well, and did some more work, and got the board's input. And thank you so much. I appreciate it.
No, I really appreciate your time.
Counsel? Councilmember Jones?
Just a quick question. Thank you. I mean, it sounds like a complete directional change, which is awesome to hear. And I do thank Councilmember Trent for being involved and seeing some movement going on. Two quick things. One, with the endowment, because I know annually funds are supposed to be, has that been being done? I know you're going to start doing it, but in the past years, has that percentage been taken out of the endowment?
No, this is brand-new.
This is, okay.
The investment and spending policy was approved last week, so.
I've got fresh, because I think Mayor Sylvia had kind of challenged you with coming up with a project, possibly to kind of get things rolling. Have you had any thought on anything? I know you're doing a lot right now, so I'm not trying to burden you with more, but.
Yeah, nothing specific, but we've got new leadership on the way, and they'll definitely be bringing new ideas and fresh thinking.
It's exciting to hear, so thank you. I know you put a lot of work into this, and there's lots of change going on, so thanks for how you've served Dinosaur Hill. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, counsel? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, next up, we have another amazing community partner. We have Meadowbrook Learning Center for Learning, and I believe we have Yolanda Udell here. And I don't think I caught your title, so let me read your card here.
Executive Director.
Executive Director. Well, welcome, and I know that you just celebrated 36 years in Rochester, so please tell us about Meadowbrook Learning.
So, yes, Meadowbrook Center for Learning, differences has been in the community for over 36 years. In fact, we just celebrated a ribbon cutting. I know Councilmember Dixon was there, and so, as well as Councilmember Jones was there. We moved into a larger space to accommodate the growth that we've experienced. At Meadowbrook Center for Learning, we service about 100 children a week on a regular basis. These are children who have ADHD, autism, a variety of learning disabilities, and some of them don't have any disabilities at all, so we work with a variety of learners, from remediation classes to AP help. And our focus.
Do you want to put your PowerPoint on?
Yeah.
If some, Jeremy said you're all set to go, right?
It's just on the bottom. On the bottom, I'm going to.
Okay, which one is?
To the orange, the orange P for PowerPoint?
Okay, got it.
Just since you've put the time into it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, yeah. I wasn't sure which way to go with that. So it was founded in 1988, as you all know, with the 36 years, and it was founded because one of the founders had a child with dyslexia, and the child's needs were not being met at the school level. Dyslexia is something that impacts 20% of the population and 50% of inmates. We moved into our new space, which is about 2,600 square feet, beautiful space that really helps to accommodate all of our students. We work with students from preschool to adult. 15% of our students, of our families, are, need financial assistance. And that's not just individuals who are financially underprivileged. That is also individuals, for example, I have two families that someone from within the family, mom or dad, lost their job. Another family where mom has stage-four cancer, and every year they start once again with the deductibles that they have to pay. So some of these people are facing circumstances that, you know, unbeknownst, nothing that they could have helped. And that's where we come in, and we're able to give the financial need that they need and help, and not discontinue the academic help the children need. So through our raising funds and the grants that we write, we're able to provide those services to students. 30% of our students have some kind of learning challenge, dyslexia, as I mentioned, ADHD, autism. Everything is one-to-one. We customize our learning plans for our students. We hire nothing but experienced professional individuals. No one has, everyone has a college degree. We don't hire college kids, we don't hire high school kids, and that's predominantly because of the population of students that we work with. We need people who understand that population and have the patience to work with them. We work, as I said, from remediation to SAT prep, handwriting classes, ESL, study skills, the list goes on and on. What makes us different from our competitors in the community, and there are a few of them, is everything is one-to-one. It's not a situation where you have two or three kids, children with ADHD or autism. You really need that one-to-one. They can't sit there with one or two other children, they get easily distracted. We have highly experienced tutors. We train everyone in a program called Orton-Gillingham. Orton-Gillingham has been around for over 30 years, and it's a program that is tried and true in helping individuals learn to read, individuals that have reading disabilities as well as dyslexia, and it's been highly successful. We don't have registration fees, contract fees, homework fees, none of that. Everything is included. And in fact, our fees are really below market value. Our competitors are charging anywhere between $75 and upwards. We're still down at $60, $60 an hour. We come highly recommended from schools, psychologists, teachers, Corewell Behavioral Center. We get a lot of people that are recommended when I call. I always ask, who, how did you recommend us? And many times, it is through one of those aspects. A funding strategy, obviously, most of our funds come from families who are able to pay, but we do fundraisers. We have a mom's fundraiser that is started in the, in August goes through October. We have a heartbreakers fundraiser, which is a comedy club on February 8th out in Mount Clements, and we're doing a Hawaii Fluid Art, which is just up the road over near Hamlin Pub, and that'll be, that'll be in March. I write grants, I've gotten grants from Rochester Rotary, City of Rochester Hills just gave us some ARPA funds, the Heisinga Fund, Comerica just gave us $9,000, community foundation, and obviously, we're in the middle of our year-end campaign, and we've had individuals who will sponsor a child for a week or a month. My ask to you is share the awareness. Like a lot of nonprofits in the community, people don't know who we are. Even Dinosaur Hill, I talk to people about Dinosaur Hill very often because one of their volunteers is one of our tutors. And so when I have the opportunity to share the information, I do. And so very often, people don't know who you are. So like us on Facebook, join our mailing list, support our programs, whether it's a year-end donation, or, sorry, what's that? Or being part of our mailing list. Let people know who we are, what we do, and how we service. And the big thing about us is that we're really very community-based. When a parent calls my office and they're asking for help, I'm looking at various ways that I can help them, not just in the resources that we offer, but other resources, resources within the community. I've gotten people from as far as Detroit calling me, asking, hey, can you help my child? And I will say, listen, you're really kind of far. Gifts for All God's Children is in Detroit. They can certainly help you. And if I don't have an answer for questions that they have, I will find those answers. I've even called Councilmember Trent when I've needed information about resources in Detroit. So I really go out of my way. It doesn't matter whether or not they're a client of mine or not, that's irrelevant. What's important to me is how can I help this family reach the needs that they're obviously looking for, for their children? And then obviously, you know, support our fundraisers. So this is one of our moms. That table is 27 inches, just so you get an idea, and they are $15 when I pick them up. So if you are interested, come next fall, you know, certainly give us a call, and we'd be more than happy to provide them for you. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Yolanda. Thank you. Thank you for educating all of us about Meadowbrook Learning. Rochester is made great by all the partnerships that we have. Counsel, anyone else?
I just wanted to thank Yolanda also, because she's involved in a lot of the nonprofits in town, so you didn't really toot your own horn there on what you do in the community. She's an ambassador for the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce and very involved. You know all the connections with the nonprofits, so we really thank you for what you do in the community.
My pleasure. One of the things I will say, I mentioned the ARPA funds that we got from Rochester Hills very briefly, and what I have found is that a number of the families that, basically what that did is that that provided free tutoring for children in the community for the past, oh gosh, I want to say almost two years. Those funds have been exhausted, so a lot of families find themselves kind of, you know, they don't really have the funds to pay entirely, and at the same time, their child needs help. So this is where I have seen that there are far more families in the community in need of that than people really realize and anticipate. They're just average families. Maybe it's mom is a nurse and dad's a firefighter, and they're trying to put funds away to buy a new vehicle, as it was a conversation that I had, and so paying for tutoring is just another added layer of finances that's difficult for them, and that's kind of where we come in to help them.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I can't not say anything about you, Yolanda. I've known you since 2001, and my daughter babysat your children, and I watched you raise your children and take this organization from this very smaller size and really grow it, and there has been a lot more awareness about your, I mean, and obviously, you could use more, but I wanted to congratulate you as I've seen the hard work that you've put in, and I did, I didn't want it to go unnoticed that I saw how you've grown this organization, and it's been quite phenomenal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's really a team effort. I mean, I've had, I have an amazing administrator for my Facebook page. I definitely can't do that on my own, so I'm very thankful for that. And really, it goes to the work that our tutors do and their dedication. It is because of them that word of mouth is really out there, and that's a lot of where we get our advertising from.
Great. Thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we will have the presentation of the audit. We have Rena Emmons, and counsel, you should have received a hard copy. Good to see you again.
Good evening. Mayor Sylvia, nice to say that, be able to say that. The, my name is Rena Emmons, I'm a partner with PSLZ, my pleasure to be here tonight, and present to you the City of Rochester's annual audited financial statements for your fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. The, I'd like to start with a few highlights, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. The, we do have a very good report for you this evening. The city did receive the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion, so no exceptions, disclaimers, nothing bad to report tonight, a clean audit opinion in layman's terms. And also, just, we have some new faces. The city is required to have an annual audit by an independent firm, and that's, that's why I'm here presenting this evening. The, starting with highlights, property tax revenues increased, not because you raised any mileage rates, but purely untaxable value, 6.6% this year in comparison, it was just above 6% last year, so we did see a nice little increase there. State shared revenue was pretty flat this year. That is the sales and income tax that the state collects and distributes to the local units. I mean, it was literally like an $1,100 increase, so for the city of Rochester, that's pretty much flat. They're not projecting any significant increases for next year, even though it is just a projection, they're not projecting more than a 1%, maybe 2% tops increase in those revenues. Fortunately, we don't rely solely on state shared revenue, but that's what they're projecting. The real story here, of course, is investment income that the city has taken advantage of this year. If I gave it to you in a percentage rate, it would be, you know, kind of crazy sounding. So let me just say that you've over-doubled the year before's interest income. You are taking advantage of very safe and secure investments, and that is, that is available to municipalities. You kind of have a, you're limited in the state of Michigan as to what municipalities can invest in, so you're taking advantage of all the good rates, and it's showing. So nice work, Treasure Magio. The, you've kept operating expenditures very stable, and that is through monitoring and, you know, staying within the budget, but no big spikes in operating expenditures. Really, the story here tonight is all capital expenditures, projects that you've accomplished throughout the year, taking advantage of a lot of grant money that's available. So, you know, the city staff's done a really nice job of taking advantage of money that's out there, doing, you know, the research and getting that in here for the city to take advantage of. Ultimately, we increased the general fund fund balance by 512,000, and you came in under budget, about 531,000. The major general fund transfers out to other funds include the local street fund of 792,000, and also the facilities and grounds fund, about 1.2 million this year. The significant capital projects are, they're a multitude of things like equipment and that type of thing, but really, it's street reconstruction was the major capital that you spent on this year, and also, I'll talk about some water improvements in a minute. The debt this year, you paid down 1.86 million in principal on the debt, and there was a, the Oakland-McComb Interceptor is a series of contract debt through the county. We had a couple, $230,000 additional one that they tacked on this year, so they just keep coming, I guess is the, how we have to look at it. The water and sewer fund, you, in the past, you had an operating loss, you had about 10-year run of operating losses, but the last couple of years, you're in the, you're in the black. The last two years, you've had operating income, so that's a nice trend. It is looking like a trend now, even with depreciation included in there, so we like to see that. Again, you're taking advantage of some state grants in the water and sewer fund. The prior year was like 1.7 million, this year is about 750,000 additionally, so that's like two and a half million dollars over the last two years. It was 1.9 just in this year alone, of capital projects within the water and sewer fund, which is tremendous. You know, we, it would be hard to do those kind of projects. Water and sewer, it's always big dollars. No small, there's, even repairs are nothing short of six figures, so, you know, that's, that's great. We like to take advantage of that. Parking fund is operationally solvent, 1.2 million, so we did have an operating income this year. I know you like to keep an eye on the, on the parking fund, but that's also doing well. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the pension and OPEB liabilities. Pension liability, pretty, pretty much break even this year. You had net investment income of 1.86 million. As compared to the year before, we had an investment loss of 1.9, so that, last, the prior year really dragged down our funding percentage. So in the prior year audit was 61% funded, but now we are at 63% funded, so seeing a net investment income in the pension trust helps bump up our funding percentage. You're still within the state, what we're, the state likes to see you on the, on the pension funding. And OPEB, other post-employment benefit liability, the net, you actually have a net OPEB asset of 4.5 million, so that's money you've contributed over the years into a trust fund to pay for retiree benefits in the, in the future. So you are fully funded there. The, with that, I guess if anyone, that's a lot of numbers thrown at you all at once. If anyone has any specific questions, I'm happy to address them.
Counsel? Well, I would just, I just had a simple question. How many years have you done our audit?
That simple question to you, I have to think about that one. Maybe it was 2005?
Quite a few. Maybe 10?
Mayor Pro Tem Dixon, maybe?
I think it's been 20.
20.
20 years.
2005-ish.
I appreciate that, because you have great history with us, and you have great perspective, so I appreciate that.
And I appreciate being part of the team. You have a tremendous staff here, and, you know, the council has always given us great support, so it's, you know, it works hand-in-hand, and we really appreciate that. It makes things very efficient. The audit is a, is a huge project, involves every, we get everybody involved, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And so, thank you, Treasure Magio. Thank you, Marcy Morwacki. You guys are the A-team, the finance team, and so thank you, and happy to have a clean audit, and any other questions? Nope? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, moving on. We have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 26, 2024. Councilmember Trent?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 26, 2024.
Motion by Trent?
Support.
Support by Sage. City Clerk?
Sylvia?
Yes?
Dixon?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have three items. We have consideration to approve the Scareaway Hunger 5K fundraiser. This one is for 2025, October 5th, 2025, so get ready. Second is to approve the Goodbye 2024 5K. That'll be held on December 31st, 2024. And lastly, consideration to approve the meeting schedule for 2025 for City Council. If you notice, counsel, there were three meetings that were changed from our regular second and fourth Monday. So apparently, three big holidays in Rochester, Memorial Day, Lonnyup, and Christmas. So that's the consent agenda.
I'll make a.
Motion by Trent?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Support by Sage. City Clerk?
Sylvia?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, no old business, no public hearings, no legislative deliberation. Moving on to regular reports and business. All right, item A, we're going to have a consideration of the establishment of an SID for Miller Baldwin Roads. I know that we have Tom Tang, I should have learned how to pronounce your last name while I talked to you earlier. I know we have Tom here to talk about it. City manager, do you want to kick this off?
Well, first of all, Tom, that was a fake audit. We don't have any money, just so.
I knew that's what he was thinking. I knew that's what he was doing.
I'm like, why did we invite him when we had the audit? Rena, thanks a lot for that. Okay, thank you for that.
Thought it was clean. We have clean money.
So some of you might know Tom as the city manager of Auburn Hills for, what, 73 years now? So I've known, I've known Tom for 35, 30, almost 35 years now, and, and I was excited to know that when he decided to relocate to the city of Rochester. I was excited, and then like, oh boy, this is going to cause a problem, probably. So Tom moved into the Miller Baldwin area and helped us with a massive problem. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge that, that we've been working, Chief Seize has been working with that group, that Tom will explain, I'm sure, the, that makes up the kind of association for years. Not, not very pleasantly, quite frankly. It's been very difficult to get to the path which was.
Excellent. Okay, no old business, no public hearings, no legislative deliberation. Moving on to regular reports and business. All right, item A, we're going to have a consideration of the establishment of an SAD for Miller Baldwin Roads. I know that we have Tom Tang, I should have learned how to pronounce your last name while I talked to you earlier. I know we have Tom here to talk about it. City Manager, do you want to kick this off?
Well, first of all, Tom, that was a fake audit. We don't have any money, just so...
I knew that's what he was thinking. I knew that's what he was doing.
Yeah, I think my timing was impeccable. I'm like, why did we invite him when we had the audit? Raina, thanks a lot for that. Okay, thank you for that.
Thought it was clean. We have clean money.
So, some of you might know Tom as the City Manager of Auburn Hills for, what, 73 years now? So I've known, I've known Tom for 35, 30, almost 35 years now, and, and I was excited to know that when he decided to relocate to the city of Rochester, I was excited, and then like, oh boy, this is going to cause a problem, probably. So, Tom moved into the Miller Baldwin area and helped us with a massive problem. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge that, that we've been working, Chief Seize has been working with that group, on that, that Tom will explain, I'm sure, the, that makes up the kind of association for years. Not, not very pleasantly, quite frankly. It's been very difficult to get to the path, which was simply, we need you to fix your roads to city standards, who are internal roads, et cetera. So it's been a grind for them. Grind for us, a lot of time trying to get through this. When Tom came in, he, because he's Tom, and he knows what he's doing here, he came in and organized that group, and it's made light years of improvements since he's been there. It's accountable, it's professional, he likes consensus, and he's been grinding this through with Chief, with myself, with Attorney Crot, everybody, trying to come to a conclusion. And whilst I don't agree with what he's asking for tonight, he's, understands the process, and we certainly want to hear this out, which is to help that association pre-fund a construction job of about 1.2 million to redo their internal structure. Over the years, they have not built up a pot of money in order to be able to do that and cash fund it. Some communities do, some don't. Tom inherited a group of people, a group of associations that have not. So, having said that, I told Tom, give us all you got, and so we can understand the background.
Yeah, City Manager, could you first explain what an SAD is for the public, how that works?
Yep, so it's a special assessment. So what they would be asking for is, they don't have the funding or the ability at this point to get traditional funding to pay for that. So, in many cases, a group will come, if there's public purpose, they will come to the city and ask, well, we be the fiduciary, basically. Would we upfront the money, pay the contractor, gets it done, agree to a, a contract that over a period of years, they would pass back terms to be negotiated with City Council? So, you've got to have a public purpose to do this, that we're reminded, so you can't just willy-nilly do it. Mayor Pro Tem, Bixen, I were talking, back in the day, it was curbs, I think?
Curbs and gutters.
Curbs and gutters. But we haven't done any of them since I've been here and longer, actually. So, most, like, kind of many of the associations will build a pot of money so they don't have to come here. This is kind of desperate, last, a last-ditch effort to try to get this forward so that we're, we can work together as a team. So basically, it's just a special assessment, pre-funded by the city, payback over a term.
Tom?
Tom TNG, 480 Baldwin Avenue, here in Rochester. I always love an intro where you get all these accolades followed by, but I don't support him. Nothing like that, right? So, Mayor, City Council, I appreciate you allowing me to, allowing me to speak this evening. I'm used to being on that side of the table, so it's a little different for me. I am speaking this afternoon, or this evening, on behalf of what is essentially five associations, Rochester Park, where I reside, Rochester Park II, the Hills of Rochester, Rochester Ridge, and then an individual who happens to own two, two units in the area, Dennis Scott. This is 262 condominium units in those five associations, and as I understand it, as Nick explained, this is the first time in 100 years, and I've only been around 74, right? So, that we've actually gotten all the associations together and agree as associations to pursue fixing the roads. So as you can imagine, we, Nick mentioned that we estimate the cost of these road improvements to be approximately 1.2 million dollars. A couple of years ago, in fact, it was May of 2022, the city of Rochester went out and received a cost estimate to do the necessary repairs and reconstruction of these two private roads at about 850,000 dollars. If you are familiar, and I'm sure most of you are, with the cost of construction of roads over the last few years, they've gone up astronomically, and so we've just generally added about 20% per year over the last two years to that number, thus, 1.2 million dollars. So back on August 30th of this year, I co-authored a letter with Ed Olend, who is a senior property manager for both Rochester Park II and the Hills of, the Hills of Rochester. We sent that letter to you, and I don't want to rehash it, because I believe you all have it, and there's no point in me reading the letter to you. But, we do finally have full support of all five associations. Rochester Ridge was a little bit of a holdout, and they have thrown their support behind the concept of seeking a special assessment district. And I talked to Mr. Dennis Scott this afternoon, who wholeheartedly supports the special assessment district. The problem, of course, before us is that cumulatively, these five associations do not have the capital to spend 1.2 million dollars to reconstruct these roads. This, I got involved because actually, the city, and rightfully so, is pretty agitated with the fact that these roads exist in the condition they are. If you've driven down Miller Road anytime recently, it looks like it's been carpet-bombed, and we spend thousands of dollars each year, and we, we divide those costs among the five associations to have it constantly patched. It's just not a great solution, and certainly not a, a permanent solution. So, we got everybody together, got everybody on board, and one of the things that we recognize that, while this condition may exist somewhere else in, in the city of Rochester, I'm not, I'm not certain, but we feel that we have a very unique situation in that we have a section of Miller Road that runs from a city road to another city road. So we get a lot of traffic that, for a private road, is, is a little unusual. So, we bear the burden of trash trucks, buses, large commercial vehicles, regular vehicular daily traffic. And so we bear the burden of the destruction they do to those roads, but we have to pay for those ourselves, even though regular traffic that passes through the city of Rochester is using our private road, as if it were a public road. And that really brought us to why we are here today, to request funding for, for the roads. We don't anticipate or expect these roads to become public roads once these improvements are completed, if they, if they are funded. Our expectation is that we just get the roads into a condition that is acceptable to the city of Rochester, and certainly acceptable to many of the residents who live there. I want to make note that I'm speaking on behalf of the boards of what we'll call five associations. They are all on board with this, this plan. It doesn't mean that individual homeowners might object to, you know, to a special assessment district, but being a democracy, I guess we'll see how that all plays out. And if we were lucky enough to be funded with an SAD, we would, of course, move forward, and those individuals would have to participate, just, all 262 units would have to participate equally. I don't really know that there's anything else I need to add to this. We, we have an estimate of the cost, we have had, we have spent money for an engineering firm to go out, testing engineers, G2 Consulting, they're a well-known firm around the area. We did incur the cost of having them go out earlier this year. They did some soil borings and some other testing. They looked at the, the curbing, looked at where they could, where they could save existing curbing, and they have given us a plan for what we need to do to reconstruct the roads. And I do say it's a reconstruction. Some of the base will be salvaged, but all of the, the surface asphalt has to be removed. And so between a combination of saving what we can and removing all the asphalt and putting a couple of layers of new asphalt on both Baldwin Avenue and on Miller Road, we're, we estimate about 1.2 million dollars. We're hoping that maybe we could be part of, maybe a bond proposal or something that is added to a project list that you might have in 2025, if at all possible. And again, we're fully prepared to enter into some sort of agreement so that we pay it back over a period of years. I'm guessing that the city of Rochester probably isn't all that thrilled about a long-term payment repayment schedule, but I think it would be reasonable for us to pay that back over a five to seven-year period, which, in terms of an SAD, is a relatively short payback period. I do know there are other people in the audience that represent other associations here, as well as individual residents. I don't know if they wish to add to this, but I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. How about Council? Questions for Tom?
Well, no questions. Obviously, when I have a moment to speak, as I am a resident within this proposed special assessment district, I would like to make some comments, whether I have to do it here or at the podium, but I would defer to anyone here in the audience that represents one of the other associations or a resident.
Eddie?
I have a question.
Go ahead, you go. All right, yeah, let's hold the public comments. Let's start with Council. So, Councilmember Trent?
Okay, yes, I just wondered that, so it's 1.2 million, and they've known about this for a couple of years. Has there been any money set aside at all to tell your residents, like, hey, get ready, so that you'll bring, you would bring to the table, some like, hey, we've already gotten, you know, we have a couple hundred grand here?
Well, I've only lived here about two years, a little more than two years. So for me, I'm not, I, I do know that the associations, I can't speak to the, for example, the reserve funds that other associations have. I know that Rochester Park has a reserve fund, and, but it's nothing of the, that would be necessary, would, would meet the necessity of fixing these roads. And in fact, if you are familiar with Rochester Park, there's been a lot of deferred maintenance. We are doing a lot of stuff right now. Dues were very low, and the association seemed to have a history of priding itself on low dues and not doing a whole lot to the property. That is changing. Last year, I became president of the association. We raised the dues from $225 a month to 250. This year, they're going to 275, and we will start to build our reserves, but by no means do we have the kind of funding. What money we do have, we are investing in necessities such as new doors, worn-out carpeting, appliances that are broken, and things that are really of absolute necessity.
Yeah, well, I, I am empathetic, honestly. I, I just wondered how truly I understand this problem, and I knocked on a lot of doors in the HOAs, and they spoke of double taxation, they felt like, on garbage pickup, et cetera. But if you did get this money, you're saying 225, 250, 275. How do you, how, I mean, to pay back 1.2 million, it's going to jack it up some, would be my assumption?
It wouldn't be paid back through our dues, it would be paid back through an agreement between the city and each association. Each unit would be assigned their proportionate cost, whether it's done on just a per-unit basis, that would have to be worked out. I can tell you that the most commonly used method for SADs in communities is on a per-unit basis, and I, I'm sure there are other methods that can be used, but it's one that is most defensible in a court of law. Sometimes these things do get challenged, and they're, and they're upheld. But this would be a direct special assessment on the tax bill, and it would show up on your tax bill as an annual payment due back to the city. So, just to give you a rough estimate without any interest payment, I took 262 units and divided that, it's about 4,600 dollars per unit. That sounds like a lot of money, but I've actually talked to some of the residents, not only in my own association, but in other associations, and one of the things that I find is, as Americans, we love to just pay as we go, and, you know, we don't like lump sums, right?
Right.
So, I've talked to a lot of residents who have said, I would be supportive, but I would like to be able to make an annual payment, so rather than get a bill for 4,600 dollars, could that be spread out over a period of time? I had mentioned five to seven years, because I think that's a reasonable amount. That'll still, that will still probably generate, it could be, generate a bill of 800 to 1,000 dollars a year, depending on whether it's five to seven years. And again, I don't even know what the interest is on that, because I haven't calculated that, but, because I don't know what the interest rate would be that you would charge. I think Nick said maybe a half a 1% or something like that.
So, no. So I'd assume that you would, would, if, you know, if this doesn't pass or doesn't get an agreement, then you would have to go to a bank, or something?
You can't get funding for this.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, and I'm empathetic as well, but I, I guess I'll ask a difficult question. I know other condo associations do assessments. So, if you, if you did a 4,600 dollar assessment, I, I know that's a lot. Why, why couldn't you do that, in, in theory?
Well, we could, and I think that we could do that, and we could start it now, and just like what I'm asking of the City Council, is the same thing we would do if it was our, if it was our, our own special assessment, and we would ask for it a certain amount over a period of years. The goal here is to actually just get it done. Again, I mentioned early on when I got up here that one of the reasons I got involved in this is because the city has had it up to here, and I don't blame them, for the condition of those roads, and has been sending letters to the association saying, you need to fix these roads. I know the city happens to get phone calls all the time about the conditions of these roads, and the city has to repeatedly tell the residents from that area that they're not our roads, you have to call your association. So, the reason for the ask is because if we were to do what you suggested, we would be looking at probably five to seven years down the road before we would be able to do this. I think that it would be very difficult in a lot of circumstances to ask anyone to write a check for what could be as much as 5,000 dollars all at once. I think that will create a true hardship for a lot of people. So it would have to be in increments, and then I couldn't really address the problem until at least maybe five, six years down the road. So I'm trying to find a, a better solution that will get the work done sooner. The, the road is already way past its life, and it's, I just describe it in one word, and that's deplorable. Thank you.
Couple of questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Banda, this might be a question for you, or maybe even Mr. Crot. Have, has the city ever done this for any other HOA in town? Is that a no?
That's a no.
Okay. And so, Mr. TNG, I appreciate, just like everyone else up here, the situation that you're in. You moved in here a couple of years ago, and unfortunately, this is on your plate now, but I have to believe these roads didn't get into the condition they are today overnight.
They did not.
They did not. And someone, or some group of people, were charged with managing this association, and as part of that management, they're required to do maintenance and preventative maintenance, and do a look ahead and say, hey, what do we have to do here? What's going to be coming up? Just like we do when we forecast where we have to spend our money and what we have to do to make sure things operate continuously. So, the, the, the struggle I'm having is, it would be one thing if this was just an absolute, you know, a sudden instance where something caved in, and we were having to rush and scramble to help out this situation. But here, and I've been up there many, many times, I don't live far away, I just don't think this is something that, you know, I think there's a willingness to want to work, at least for me, but at the same time, not coming here with something and say, hey, listen, we've gone to our residents, and we've come up with X amount of dollars. This is where we are. Can you help us get to the finish line? I think that, for me at least, would have been a little bit better received. So I would want to know that. And then number two, with respect to that one part of the road that you, Miller, right? Where it...
That's correct.
It's the part between the two. I appreciate what you're saying there, and that's a little bit of a unique situation, so I am a little bit more sympathetic to that. But at the end of the day, you know, if I understand you correctly, what you're asking for correctly is that you want the city to pay for something that these homeowner associations have known for many, many years was coming, and through whatever reasons, the management of those HOAs kind of put their head in the sand, and that's where I'm struggling with. So, can you reconcile that with me?
Yeah, I think your last statement is half-right. It's because you said you want, we want you to pay for it. We want you to provide the upfront funding that we are willing to pay back with interest. So ultimately, we would pay for it.
But, but if I can interrupt you for just a moment. You want us to pay for it, but you've not come here with anything specific to say, these are the terms and conditions that we're going to pay you back on. There's no term, there's no no, there's no dollar amount. You're saying, oh, I think maybe five to seven years, if everyone pays their 4,600 dollars. And so, to me, again, that's a little bit vague, and I'm not trying to challenge you
and with, with Mr. Croft and Mr. Banda. And, and there's been other staff involved in these meetings. And what I'm here today is, to do is to try to, to, to find a solution. I'm at my wits' end. I think that it's not to say that we couldn't go out and somehow start to raise the money and come up with some sort of process of collecting from 262 units. But that is not going to address the immediate problem. And, and, and you're right, it's, it's our problem. And it hasn't been addressed properly in, in the past. And it should have been done years ago, but it wasn't. So here I am today.
Right. And I, and I appreciate the, the position you're in. I don't want you to think I'm picking on you personally. Okay, that's, I wanted to make sure of that.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and Tom, I would say for, for my part, you, you are in a, you're in a tough spot and, you know, are here. To me, it's, these roads are in bad condition, but this problem has been brewing for a number of years. I can remember six, seven years back getting emails from HOAs there saying, why don't, why doesn't the city just take these roads over? And, and quite frankly, no, we can't just take those, those roads over. We've got very limited resources for our roads and work really hard to, to plan and allocate and make sure that we're, you know, spreading those resources around the best we can. And, you know, my problem with an SAD is, you know, a $5,000 bill for a homeowner or a resident who's used to paying a tax bill of about $1,000, that's five years' worth of taxes that all of a sudden they have to come up with. I, I just see too much liability where the city would end up holding the bag, where we would then have to use other people's tax dollars to pay for your roads because it hasn't been managed well in the past. So, it's a hard one and these, these roads need to be addressed, but I just don't feel like an SAD is the, is the answer.
Okay.
Anything else from council? Councilmember King?
I have a question. The residents in this area, are they being taxed at the same tax rate as all of our residents that are on city-owned public roads?
Absolutely.
Yeah, why wouldn't they?
Right, property tax. Yeah. So, so they're paying for roads in the city, just not their road. So, to me, that kind of does lend to the fact that the city should be working
on helping find a solution here. Christian, I completely agree with you. Like, it's very frustrating that these HOAs let it get to this point. And, you know, two, three years ago, they, they knew this, for years, it sounds like they knew this was coming. I would have loved to have seen, hey, we've got part of the way there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you help us get there?
Right, right.
It is quite a big liability. If we were to do something, I almost would want to see them come out of pocket at the start, not for the full amount on the city.
Anyway, to, to Sarah's point, and, and I was kind of gonna get to that. If, if I think, if the presentation had been, hey, listen, you know, we, we went door to door, we issued an assessment and we, we, this is what we have. Can you help us get to the finish line? I, again, I cannot speak for anyone else up here, but at least for me personally, I probably would have been a little bit more responsive and say, okay, let's see what we can do here to manage this and get you to where you need to be. Because we all win. Everyone wins when our roads and infrastructure is at the top level. But for this right now, it's kind of like, mm, you know, it, you're, you're kind of like saying, hey, I know this is not our, you know, our, our, it's our problem, but we're gonna make it yours. So hey, pay for it and, and we'll maybe pay you back in five to seven years. Is there a way that you can go back and recalibrate and come back to us, at least for me at least, to, to see if there's a solution there? Because I, I think we want to work with you, at least I do. But I gotta see more from, from, from your side.
Well, I think there, there, there probably is. And I don't, again, I don't want to speak for the other associations that are here. I know that I would be more than happy to go back to my own association board and initiate something like that. The reason I'm here today is, as I described, it's, it's, it's been dropped on, on my doorstep.
Yep.
And I'm trying to do something about it. And I know how unhappy the city is with the conditions of the roads. And it's sort of a, it's an eyesore for the city. And I'm sure it's nothing the city's proud of to drive down that road. And so I was looking, I'm, I'm trying to find a short-term solution. Short-term solution is not, is not to start collecting for two or three years and then come back. But if that's the answer that I get, I think that's something that we're happy to pursue. But in the meantime, the city will need to understand that it will be just a continuous patching, 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 and at least for the next two, three years, I would say, we're still going to have a terrible one.
Um, Tom, are there other members of the HOAs, the other HOAs?
Yes.
That are here that could answer councilmembers' questions as well, since you said you could only speak to your HOA?
Yes.
I would like to hear from the other HOAs if they have any other comments.
Sure.
Um, Mayor.
Um, my, I, I, even with trying to negotiate coming back, my biggest concern on this is precedent. We've never done this before. This really opens up a door for the city legally, if we do this for one HOA, the next one coming to us, we, we'd be hard pressed to say no. So I think that's my biggest concern, is the precedent that this is setting.
Councilmember Trent?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to understand the legalities of the precedent. But I also am curious about if we're using this, are the buses and trucks, and you're saying that, as a pub, part of a public part, which I do know that section, then, I mean, could you technically say this is a private road only and only residents can be? I mean, if you want to play hardball, I mean, I'm just playing the devil's advocate. Can you?
Well, I've played hardball a few times in 35 years as a city manager.
Okay.
And, and, and I raised that issue actually because, uh, the, I, I mean, we thought about that. Well, well, maybe we should just close the road where Miller meets the city's Miller, right? The city portion?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because again, uh, that's also part of the motivation of being, about being here is for that very reason. We, we felt that it was appropriate to reach out to the city because the roadway is being used as if it's a public city road. And we're bearing the brunt of that. And I'm actually glad that councilmember King brought up the, the tax situation because it's not something I was really going to raise, but everybody there's paying the same tax rate, except they're paying for their own road. So, and it's a road being used by the general public. So.
Well, to, for me, that seems to be a slight nuance or a bigger nuance in the, in the precedent, just to, just as my, my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had some questions from council to the HOA. So I would like to hear from the other HOAs. If you, if you're a, a, not a, if you're the board chair, or if you're the leader of the HOA, if you could approach, please. And state the name of the HOA and your name and address, please.
Brady Stetson. I'm the president of Rochester Park Two at 488 Elizabeth. So, quite frankly, we have been working on this road situation for at least eight to 10 years. There are five different communities and it's difficult to get all of the associations together to do this in the first place. So that's, I mean, we've been working toward that. Our association has made changes. We've increased dues over the last six years. We have a plan for the road, but we can't pay because we're not in charge of the easement agreement. So, you have to understand the frustration from our part is we've been trying to do this for eight years and you tell us that we're mismanaging, but we, we can't, we're helpless. We can't do anything. So we've come to the city to try to help us guide this situation. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
I need clarity on that about easement. Nick, can?
If you could clarify that, city manager, what that means?
Yeah.
Tom, I know, I, I don't know. That's the first I've heard of that.
Okay, so I could.
Is this Steve the council member or Steve the resident?
I will speak as council here and reserve my comments as citizen.
Yep.
So, of these five HOAs, there, at the same time that the HOA was inceptioned, an easement and maintenance agreement was then codified for all five, right? So Rochester Park, that Mr. Tangi spoke to, or on behalf of, was the one administering all of that. Because we had a majority of the residents, we just doled out judiciously based on the number of units in each of the associations, what your portion was of that agreement. So, that is one of the other things that would be coming before you, is how do you codify that of all five people that have the same? So when you ask about, well, why didn't you, and I'm gonna speak to this later, why didn't you plan ahead? Well, you've got five different groups that are managing the same thing. So just.
That, that's some good, that's some good clarification. Would you like to speak, please?
My name's Debbie Warnock. I live at the hills of Rochester, 433 Miller. And so yes, these roads have been an ongoing problem and it's been a battle between all the associations. One of the problems we have though, we have a lot of, a ton of seniors in our community that are on fixed income. So for them to come up with that money forward is going to be really difficult on them, you know? And we basically, I just became the president of the board this year. And, you know, we've gotten pretty much a new board. We've gotten new people on the board and we realize this is a problem. And the people that were previously on the board were there for years and years and years and just, just never really addressed the situation. And that's, that's what we have.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
Uh, my name is Steve Cuba. I represent the Rochester Ridge, kind of any association. We have, I think, 38 units of the 262, so I think we're the smallest association. Again, I think the difficulty, as some of the other associations mentioned, when you have five different groups trying to get consensus and get everybody together to come up with a plan i- is, is really challenging. And like I for myself, some of the earlier meetings were occurring during daytime hours where I could not attend due to other work responsibilities. So it was difficult for me to find input. But we do manage about 90 associations around the metro area and, and just in general. You know, a lot of each ways are, they, they are struggling with special assessments just to keep up the infrastructure of their own internal building operations such as boilers and, you know, hot water heaters and, and things like that. These, all these buildings, I think, are relatively old and, and in need of kind of instant work and maintenance. So, and especially with a lot of the older residents, it's a real hardship, you know, for people to come up with $5,000 or $6,000 right up front. You know, I, I think if, however it works out, being able to spread it over, over time is really the key. I mean, as Mr. Tangi said, it's either we allow more time to build up the assessments within the HOAs and try to keep patching, or if the city is willing to help us by getting it done sooner, you know, then, you know, again, spreading it out through tax payments or whatever would, would be most helpful to the residents. And it, it is a problem. You know, there is a lot of through traffic, excuse me, you know, people use that as a cut through all the time. And I see it myself. I mean, when I go up there, it's, it's a steady flow of traffic other than just the residents that live within the communities themselves. So, but appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Dennis Scott. I've have two units there on the end of Miller. And it's very much, as the last gentleman stated, a pass-through, always has been. Actually, a pretty high area of speed, pass-through, trucks, buses, y- you name it. And I think probably has certainly contributed to some of the wear and tear that's there, that may have occurred on some of the other longer routes around. I mean, I'm in a position that, that I certainly would like to contribute to the repair of the road. Personally, I think it would add value to all the units up there to have a nice, nice road. Maybe not a racetrack. I mean, we don't want to stick a toll booth on each end of Miller.
It's an idea.
Maybe you do.
I mean, if you're looking for other means to raise money, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
So, thank you for your consideration.
Uh, thank you, Dennis. Looks like we've got at least one more.
Hello, thank, my name is Neha Hungad and I'm a resident of Rochester Park Two. Brady's our president. And I just want to comment on some of the comments that all the councilmen might need. Brady's a man of numbers. I have been on the board myself, I think, eight years ago, and I've seen his work. And my association due is $330, you know? So, there is a reserve. And he, we take care, my, my management does take care of the property. But it's since eight years ago, I've seen this problem. And I'm aware of how much it takes for all the five associations to come together. And I want to thank Tom for doing that. Also, another point is, Tom said it, when they, when they calculated everything three, two, three years ago, it was $800,000. And now it's 1.2. To councilman Hauser, which you said, you know, if we come up with a plan and we build up the reserve, yes, it would be nice if we, if all of us could work together. But again, to build up that reserve, where will, what the budget will be in four years, we have to account for that. Like, one, it's not gonna be 1.2. It's gonna be 1.6, 1.7. That means we have to constantly up our budget for that. If there is some direction from the city saying, hey, we will help you, and if we lock up some kind of project, you know, some kind of commitment from a construction company, then there's an insight, there's a goal for us to work towards. Instead of just, without blindly just saying, this is the number, come up with that number, then it's, it's hard for residents to come up with that number. Or just imagine, like, big picture of, for a commoner to say, we have to raise 1.9 million. Oh, my God. You know, it's, it's, it's a big number. So just some guidance from the city would be really helpful. And I just appreciate all of your time and thank you for Brady and Tom for all the effort that they have put in.
Thank you. Thank you, Neha.
Thank you.
So, you know, clearly it sounds as though this has been a huge effort to even get the five entities together. So I'm gonna say at a minimum, that's some progress, right? At least we have the five entities talking together. Did you want to make another public comment or public?
As a citizen, I do.
Okay, all right.
Do you need me in front of the podium?
Wherever, wherever you want to go, resident Sage.
I mean, I think that would really make it clear. Then, yeah.
I thought it would make it more clear.
It would. I think that's the way it should be. I agree.
I've always wanted to do this.
Uh, please, please.
TikTok videos. Oh.
Please state your name and address.
Steve Sage, 440 Baldwin Avenue, Rochester, Michigan. So you know on those TikTok.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. Thank you for being here.
I've always thought about, you know, you see it on those TikTok videos where those two guys from California, what up, council? Always wanted to say it. So let's, let's walk back 40 years right now. So that's when my condos were built, okay? So, to a couple of your questions, well, why didn't we plan for that? I would ask you, as councilmembers, to deliberate this, because obviously I can't, right? There are seven other private roads in the city. Now, if you're telling me, so I don't understand 40 years ago, why the city and planning commission would have allowed any developer to have their own private road, personally. But my question would be, and I hope someone asks it, if there's seven other private roads on this map, did any of those get approved through planning after 1984? And the question should be, why? Because, to your point, don't set a precedent, right? Okay, well, you're gonna face seven other precedents, or potential for precedent. So if there's a way to work with the citizens in those areas, and it has to, it has to work for the city as well, I get that. I get that. But that would be the only consideration I ask you to have. Obviously, you know what my vote would be. I'm too vested there, right? So, and that's why I will recuse myself, because I live there. But I would just ask you to deliberate that as well in, in your discussion.
I have a general question. That's all right.
No. Mr. Sage, are you complete?
I am.
Thank you. Um, city manager, can we put the map up of the, the roads that are private versus public?
Can I answer a little bit to that?
Yep, sure.
So, full circle, been doing this a long time, other communities. The reason there are private roads, our developers came in and said, I could, I'm gonna, we'll take generalities. I have 10 acres. If I make a per, a private road 60 foot wide right of way, public sewers, public water, public storm sewer, I can get. If I make a per, a private road sixty-foot wide right-of-way, public sewers, public water, public storm sewer, I can get five units. If I do a private road, all my setbacks, et cetera, are calculated from a much, from thirty-foot easement. I can get nine homes. So Carriage Way, Cumberland Ridge, Deer Ridge, I'm not going to set it up, I'm going to use Deer Ridge separately. Cumberland Way, right now, we're dealing with them now, and Carriage Way. They got the advantage of making more money as developers by getting more units than they would have if they would have dedicated with public right-of-way, sixty-foot right-of-way. Cumberland, Mr. K back in the day, kind of saw, maybe I can get one or two more units, it's not worth it, but I still would rather have a skinnier right-of-way, the minimum that's required, so I can get a couple of extra homes. So they, right now, are going through what they need to do to bring it up to city standards as if it was done as a city road. So they had to put in all new storm sewers in the backyard, million dollars on their own, fix every sidewalk, redo all the electrical and fix the storm system. So that we would consider taking it over because they set it up that way. They didn't get the extra density, they just wanted deep, not as deep a lots for the setbacks. So Cumberland did the exact same, I'm sorry, Cumberland did that, Deer Ridge did the same thing. Eventually, we took over the road at Deer Ridge because it was based on a sixty-foot right-of-way. So Miller Baldwin's not that way. And a lot of these apartment complexes got a lot more units at that time in order to, and didn't do it to public standard. So just a little background there.
City manager.
Thank you.
Quick question. So are you saying that two of the private roads he mentioned that were in the eight, we have now made a public road?
Yes, one and a half. So Cumberland's going through the process right now. Deer Ridge, we actually took them back after they were private because they were planted at sixty feet. He just chose to keep them private at the time.
Would that be a consideration in this case?
No, we can't, it would cost, we figured out, five, yeah, three, yeah, like five million dollars at least in order to do that. You'd have to put sidewalks and everything, they can't do that.
And so on the screen, we have the map that shows in orange, the private roads within the city of Rochester. And I know Churchill Circle is one that we've talked about recently because they recently, city manager, could you explain what they've done recently there?
Yeah, so again, that's not, that's very dense, very not planned. We debate, is that really a private road? That, to me, that's just an internal driveway, comes off of Letica and it's just a driveway. They think it's a road because we pick up garbage and stuff there, but that could never be converted over to the city.
But they recent, but they recently redid their entire.
We did their own, yes.
Been a month or two.
They did, yep. They did. So Carriage Way, same thing, see off of Parkdale, right there, Jeremy, yep, the little orange squiggle, keep going, right there.
Over there.
So that's like four or five homes there. That's their own private road. Deer Ridge was up above, they, it's not even on their market, it's up higher, right there to the right. That, that one was planted, you can see it looks like a planted lot, but it was private in the beginning and now they turned that into public. So Deepwood Circle, those, those are not set up again at sixty-foot right-aways. Lot of different side bets were made, some side things with some of these kind of meetings when they're built. Like Mr. Sage said, I don't know what the planning commission was doing to say, why do you, we do any services in there? Those are private apartments or condos. There's a bunch of different deals that were cut over the last thirty years, so.
So councilmember Jones.
We just did Oakwood, we stopped because the rest of that is private and they've got to pay for that, we, we're not going to front for that.
Councilmember Jones.
So in this HO, these HO, do we do garbage through the city or do they have their own private company? So we do city, okay.
Priority waste.
Some of these others.
Yeah, we have some of these hybrids that you didn't. So back in the day when we switched over to, from waste to GFL, we made all these side deals. The condos were like, hey, we want to be, get the same rate that you guys do. Some took it, some like, we'd rather do it on our own. So we have a hybrid of all different complexes, some use waste management still.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, so when you're talking about the part where the public is using it, I think I can see it here from Miller, that does the. Yeah. So there's that. So is this less, is this in better condition then? And then this is in worse from where or anything? It's just all.
Maybe.
Come.
The paysal ratings were what, one, two?
Miller is, Miller from the west, it goes up a hill. And so from Elizabeth to about the halfway point is the worst. It, it's bad the rest of the way, but Miller is clearly the, the road more traveled.
Yeah, right. So there's, there's a real, there's a difference then that you have to say.
The general public wouldn't travel down Baldwin to go, you know, to go back up to, to Miller. So Miller has significantly greater traffic. And Miller is significantly more damaged, so. And if I can just make one comment, and again, it's not anybody's problem here, but I want to comment about something Mr. Banda said. The unfortunate thing is that when you talk about these deals that were made years ago where somebody got a lot more units, well, somebody made some money, didn't they? But you know who's left holding the bag now?
You guys.
Right. Just want to point that out because it's, there's no advantage to us.
Right. I understand. I've lived in an HOA that had an assessment and I paid for the roads. So I, I have lived this. Councilmember King.
When we look at, looking at this map, this is really helpful. Thank you for putting it out. This one is a little unique, given the cut through to the, you know, public and private roads, right? Do any, there's only a couple others that potentially have access like that, that go through? Maybe like this other one off of Elizabeth? I'm just curious.
That's no public.
The ones that are all contained.
That's Delano.
Yeah, that's, that's a Delano.
Yeah.
Okay. So when you're talking about precedent, right? I don't see a lot of others where, where we even categorize it the same, right? They're not, like, those other ones.
Can you zoom in?
Those other ones further on the east side are.
It would be Baldwin would be one, but that's, not Baldwin, but Ironwood. But you're right, there's not a lot.
They're very contained, it's really only the residents, right? So like this does, this is a little different, just saying for the, like, from a precedent standpoint.
Councilmember Hauser.
To the gentleman with the vest and, do you mind coming back? I have a couple of questions for you and promise this is not an interrogation. I just, you had mentioned something that there's, there's five different HOAs that encompass that area, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And do you know roughly what the economic status, like, you say, if I heard you correctly, does your association have the funds to, to pitch in your per-rotta share?
Either through reserves or through assessment, yeah, we have a plan to have the money that we need to, to do this. And we have a plan to continue funding over the long term to make sure that, you know, if, this is going to happen again.
Sure.
So we've put a plan in place to make sure that we can handle that.
And you're how many units?
We are fifty-two units.
Okay.
So we lower on the economy, I think Rochester Park One has the most, is that correct?
And there's two sixty-two total?
Yep.
Yes. So you're fifty, so you're what, twenty percent, right? Okay. Do you know if the other four HOAs are in a similar situation? And I'm not trying to make you a snitch or, but do you know if there's one that's like, oh, we don't have anything and everyone maybe is similar to you?
I, I don't know about their funding, no, I, I can't answer that. I, I do know that certain ones have been more cooperative over time.
To that point, I think Mr. Banda, and this is just me, again, I don't want to speak for anyone else here. I think it would be helpful if maybe the city and maybe a couple of us met with the leaders of each HOA and got the information that this, your name, sir?
Brady.
Brady. That Brady has, so we can lay it on the table and say, okay, these two or these three HOAs are in a good spot, these two might need some help. How can we bridge the gap here?
I would go even deeper, we were just chatting about this. So we don't know and they don't know, there might be a lot of people, not everyone, because they're seniors, et cetera, that would say, we'll take the full one point two special assessment. Give them the option to make the first payment, pay their four thousand off, which we would get our money back a lot quicker, right? So one, there's that association.
How much risk we're truly taking.
Exactly, so the risk might be a lot less than one point two because there might be more takers. A whole association pays their thirty-three, that's out. So that's thirty-three times four, you can figure that out. And then there might be more takers, but not everybody would be forced to. So really, we'd be helping the people that need the help, the seniors that might not be able to afford it over a period of time. We would certainly, I'm sure we could sit down with all five and come up with that in the chart.
Because for me, the precedent isn't, Sarah, to your point, I mean, I don't think it's a big risk. The bigger risk, candidly, is the unknown of our liability if something doesn't go right. Or what's the total amount of dollars that the city may have to expend on this, frankly, if there's a default? If you guys don't come back with the dollars that you say you're going to. So I want to be very clear to everyone listening, I am absolutely committed to having a further conversation on this issue based on some information that I hope the HOAs can provide. If that happens, I will absolutely be more than happy to sit down and, and see if there's something to come up. But right now, I think you hear what's going, at least from my perspective, where I would land on this vote and I've made it pretty clear where I feel.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Jones.
I, I'm going to stand with my comment about precedent because I am concerned about that, so legalities involved in that. But if you look at this, though, truly, the city cut through of citizens is only that one road. Because citizens are not cutting through around through the, so I just want to clarify, that one point two million is all of that being repaired? Is that correct? Or just a cut through that the city is using?
So I'll, yeah, it should be all of it. But I, I will state that while the traffic is less on Baldwin, there is traffic. I mean, I can take, I have a picture on my phone of a bus going out at last week.
But that, as far as the bus and the garbage trucks, to me, then, just talk to the school district. I mean, pick, they're picking up students in there. They pick up students on my street, you know? So to me, the bus part isn't really a city thing, it, they're picking up students and garbage trucks are picking up garbage. So to me, those two things, the cut through of cars, which I've done myself, you know, when I was out campaigning, I can see that, that cut through. But the whole thing being one point two million, I don't feel like the other part, just my opinion, is really city, citizens cutting through. They're not going to cut through that, that extra, which is quite a bit of this one point two million. That's all, just, just a comment.
Good, thank you. City attorney, can you clarify the, the details of an SAD? So an SAD is put on the property and they then have to make installment payments at whatever period is negotiated, annually, quarterly, whatever the case may be, over a set period of time. What happens if they don't make those payments? What is the action and what does that look like?
So with any special assessment, whether it's a PSD assessment or, or any special assessment, it would get that, whatever that yearly portion is, would go on the tax bill. And it's collected just like taxes.
So if their normal tax bill is a thousand dollars and they didn't pay their three hundred dollars, their next tax bill is thirteen hundred.
Correct.
And so then what happens if they just don't pay, don't pay, don't pay?
Well, like with anybody who doesn't pay taxes, after a certain amount of time, gets turned over to the county. The city gets paid out of the revolving fund. And then after a certain point, I believe it's three years, they, then the county would then send forfeiture notice, foreclosure notices, excuse me. So whether it's, whether there's a SAD component or whether there's not, if taxes don't get paid, usually, I think it's February, March, then the county pays the city.
Yep.
And then the collection goes to the county. So is, is it a risk of the city? Probably not.
Right.
Because they're going to get paid out of the revolving fund now.
And then ultimately, the county would be paid through the foreclosure process.
Correct. Exactly.
Okay. Councilmember Jones.
Last comment. I would be very, this, there is a valid point about this being used by the rest of the citizens. It is definitely a cut through. I would love to see when we reconvene and do some more discussion. What is the cost for the cut through part to be repaired? Because I feel like that might be something the city feels there is some responsibility. And then what's the rest?
Break out the cost between the two.
Break out of the actual cut through.
Mayor, thank. To that point, one of the problems with this particular project from a logistics standpoint is with there being five separate ownership groups, is we started going down this path of trying to figure out, whose road is it? And there's parts, if, you know, you look at the map, like, there'll be part of Baldwin that's carved out. It makes no sense in why that part is. And then another part is owned by this entity. So to cut and pace, your, your head's in a, in a good spot, but from a logistics standpoint, I couldn't sit here and tell you which ownership interest owns Miller Road. Because it's, because it's five different, it's all over the place.
One, part of an association might be there and, it still would be interesting to know if they can do it.
Correct.
I would like to know, yeah. But I see what you're saying.
Last, last question.
I bet I could talk as long as I wanted, isn't that what you told me when I voted for you? Yeah. But it, you're, but it's a one point two million project. You're not saying, well, this is thirty thousand and this few feet is maybe another couple hundred when you're, you're not trying to. Yeah, I mean, the total price is.
I wouldn't try to do that.
Right. Oh, okay. When you're saying you're trying to break it out per.
He's just talking about my comment.
You couldn't, it would be very difficult to figure out.
Okay.
All right. So council, kind of what I'm hearing is there is some, obviously, recognition of the problem. There's recognition in some interest to somehow be part of the solution. But we need more information and we would like to have administration work with the, the five-member team, or if it's just directly with you, Tom, to work on some other solutions to this. Okay. So I don't think we need any motion, I don't think we need anything for that. And I would just like to thank all the residents who came. This, this clearly is an issue that has been out there, so I'm happy that we finally could have some conversation on it. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yep.
Report. So i- if I'm reading the tea leaves a little bit, and there's a reason I'm asking this, because we've got a number of leadership. Is this a positive enough response to the request that, that the leadership can go to their people and say, we didn't get a hard no? We have a, let's see if we, is there a way forward, not that you're committing, but is it positive enough that they can represent? Because if, if it's, well, it doesn't look like they're going to do it, no one's going to come to the table, is my concern. But if, if city council is giving a, somewhat of a message that it's worth continuing discussion, then I think that's helpful.
I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing head nods.
Okay.
And, and based on my discussion earlier with Treasure Maggio, I would also like to make sure we're exploring any other sources of funds. Private funds, grants, you know, some of the, the housing stock here, maybe there would be available grants, any other solution as well. And maybe we can bring some of those parties together. I mean, we know how expensive roads are, I mean, we, we analyze this all the time, we know the costs keep going up, so you, you can't, you, you got to get on this when you can.
So just one other, this might help you, Councilwoman King. So difference between a private road and a public road, when they, you say you pay taxes, we get act fifty-one dollars back on a private road, I'm sorry, on a public road. We get money back in reference, so on top, on a private road, we get nothing from that.
That's true.
So, to be fair, they're paying taxes, but we don't get any money back for those private roads, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
We don't get money from them to repair a road where we do, okay.
Right. Okay. Great discussion. Thank you, everyone.
I'm will talk.
Thank you.
All right. Item B. Oh, this is an easy one. Okay. All right. Consideration and appointment of a board of review alternate. So we had, we had an alternate submitted for our board of review, council.
Your honor, before you go, also included in the motion note, that last paragraph was to up, reappoint the current members as well because all of them were expiring or, or going to expire, so if we just.
So we need two motions?
No, we can make one.
Okay. Counsel? Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Whichever.
As Mr. Bills has already been a member of this.
Yes, he has.
I would be proud to nominate him for reappointment to the board as well as the current existing members to confirm their continued service.
Excellent. Thank you for your nomination. We don't need a second or anything.
We can bring this back for confirmation of the appointment?
Let's just get it done.
Okay, then, then we'll need a second for the motion to.
Second by Hauser.
Got it.
City clerk, please.
Salvia.
Yes.
Vixen.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Bills. Sounds like Mr. Bill. All right. Item C. This one, we have had some previous discussion on, this is to approve our master fee schedule. So I believe Team Finance, represented by Marcy, will be approaching to give us some more information.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we are seeking your approval for the updated master fee schedule. It's outlined in the memo attached in your packet. Sorry, my voice says I sound like Christian a little bit, so.
Yeah, I got it too. I, I just said Merry Christmas too much at the parade yesterday.
I'm so sorry.
So I apologize. But following the feedback from November eleventh's presentation, we went back to, very, thank you very much for the robust discussion from the council. We took your comments back to the Budget and Finance Committee and asked their opinion. We've decided as a group that we would take off the cemetery item for the upright monuments, the pet licensing component and the code enforcement. And that we would take that to council for full council's discussion at upcoming twenty twenty-five budgets, schedules, budget workshops that are on schedule. So the revised. workshops that are on schedule. So the revised proposal, effective January 1, unless otherwise noted, incorporates the modifications that are in your packet that are highlighted yellow. These changes aim to align the fees with the actual cost of providing the services. We also went out and did a consistency with our neighbors to make sure that what we are proposing for changes are in alignment with our neighbors' fees that they have in place for any changes that we made and that we want to ensure financial sustainability. So approval would generate an estimated $10,000 per year in increased revenue. So we respectfully request your motion tonight to approve the attached resolution and the associated changes in the fee schedule. Sorry.
Do you want a cough drop?
Yeah.
We got a bunch up here. Councilmember King?
I just... I have two things I want to ask about. One, I saw on here the Kiwanis Pavilion, there's a non-resident reservation fee. So for residents, is it free?
No, the change is for the non-residents. So if you look in your pack, the first, the quick look is the changes, but the fee for residents remain unchanged. So if you turn to page, I don't know what it is in the agenda, but there is no change for the residents. It's $100 for the rental and we're proposing a new change from 150 to 200 for non-residents.
Okay. And then my only other comment, and this is just more in general, I do feel like our parking fees for... Not necessarily, I do think we should heavily penalize if you're parking in handicap or a fire hydrant, things like that, but just the over meter usage, I feel like it's very high compared to other communities. I know, I think we benchmarked against the city of Detroit, but we're not the city of Detroit. Even if you look at Birmingham, Royal Oak, the fees, if you pay within 14 days, $50 is... Seems like a lot to go from 30 to 50. I don't know if that's maybe just me, but that was the one area where I felt like we were a little high there.
So we took that to the PAC committee and had the communities in our surrounding area as well. Chief George provided that information. So the delta for a late fee was $30. So it used to be $15 for the ticket with that $30 late fee for a total of 45. When the ticket went to 20, we kept that $30 to make the late fee at $50. That's just the existing delta. We've just moved it forward with the newly... Well, the revised ticket price.
Aren't we 50 and 100?
20.
Oh, it says on here 50 and 100.
So let me just go.
After 14 days.
After the 14 days.
Oh, so if you pay...
Right.
Okay, so these are two different stuffs and fees. So we're still at $30? Or what's the ticket price for just...
$20.
$20. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. I was reading as 41.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we would be way out of line.
Okay. All right. So you're... That's clarified then.
Yeah, if it's $20, that felt more reasonable. You paid out within 14 days. After that, it goes to 50 and then if you don't pay, then it goes to 100.
Right. Exactly. Good. Excellent. Glad we clarified that. Councilmember Jones?
Although I do agree, I even think 20 is a little bit high personally. So I'm glad you brought up. I just asked actually Mayor if I could be on the parking committee. So thank you for talking about that. Did you... Did I just miss her first question, Councilmember King? Was that about the rental fees for... Okay, so my two questions. One, thank you. You addressed everything I was concerned about before, so I appreciate that. Secondly, my only concern about that not being, and I know there needs to be further discussion, Chief is not here, but he sends his letters out in December for inspections. Those need to be held back. Okay. I would like those to be held back because we are going to charge a fee this next year and I don't want the letter to go out to say that there's not a charge.
It's a good point.
So if we can just... I think he mentioned to me he was going to hold them out. Oh, he is back there. He's hiding back there.
He's big, righted.
Yeah. That would be my only comment. Otherwise, I approve what you've presented.
I've been trying to lose weight. I didn't know I did such a good job.
You did. You were hidden.
You're correct. We have not sent them out. However, we have some citizens who like to stay ahead of the game and we have some that have sent them in already, but we have not started the process, only because we agreed to wait until council had a chance to work, take a look at it during the budget process. So we will wait until we get direction from council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
Yes. I guess I would remind council, the reason we... Actually, the PAC addressed the parking structure and fees was due to the outstanding balance that Chief George has said has been there for four years. So I think, I don't think we need to quibble down to what the ticket costs. Let's get our fees collected and we move forward.
Any other questions on the master fee schedule? I know we've reviewed it in the subcommittee. You know, we always just adjust fees to stay right in line with our costs. So I think the committee has done a good job doing that. Any other questions, counsel?
I would be remiss if I just didn't make absolutely certain. When you talk about the code enforcement, cemetery and pet licensing fees being withdrawn, the code enforcement, was that the money that we talked about for the rental licenses?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will be coming back?
It will come in. I have no problems whatsoever. Thank you very much for putting this together.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to support, to implement the estimated increase rev... Or I'm sorry, to implement the master fee schedule update for 2025.
Okay. Motion by Hauser?
I'll support.
Support by Trent. City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Salvia.
Yes.
Vixen.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Implement the new schedule. All right. Now we've got probably another interesting one. Consideration of city council compensation. So on this, I know administration has put some information in the packet. So who is taking point on this? City Attorney?
Punting to the city.
Happy to take it, Mayor.
Thank you.
So yeah, so we were asked to bring this matter back for consideration for city council. There, the discussion from before involved issues with the city council compensation. The more... It was really stemmed from the fact that we... Actually, the city has not been able to have a compensation committee meet for a period of time and it's an every other year situation. And so there really hasn't been a review of city council compensation for a few years. So the discussion occurred at a previous meeting about whether city council compensation. Currently, city council members get paid for their attendance at city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and I believe that's the only two.
Correct.
I'm sorry. Yeah, ZBA and Board of Review, I think, are the other couple. So the topic for today is to determine whether or not city council wants to change how the compensation of city council members is handled. Right now, it's the compensation committee would meet. They would discuss. They would come back with a recommendation to city council. If city council agrees, then that recommendation is implemented. If the city council does not agree remarkably, it goes back. It stays what it was before. So that actually happened a number of years ago where city council wanted it to go down and... But that was contrary to the recommendation and so the... It continued at the same rate. So the...
Certain people wanted it to go down.
Well, there was a majority because they weren't able to because they disagreed with the recommendation. So at this time, there's two ways for the city council going to go. One is if city council wishes to change the way that compensation is, how that process occurred, would be to remove the compensation committee from the process and which would be to essentially delete it from the books. So the ordinance amendment that's in your packet does a couple of things. One is to... Because the city charter says that compensation in city council occurs by ordinance, okay, which is then punted to the compensation committee and that's how it took care of. So the charter still requires it to be by ordinance. So the ordinance amendment would be to add a section, Section 2-33, which would say that the compensation of the mayor, pro temp and council shall be set by resolution and will remain in place until it's changed again. We also added language in it that a city council member may opt out of receiving all compensation, any or all compensation if they don't want to receive that. So if... Then the next part of the ordinance amendment is to remove all of the compensation committee provisions. So charter says, look to ordinance. Ordinance says it's to be set by resolution. We take out the ordinance that deals with the compensation commission. So a couple things along with that. There's a number of boards and commissions that are laid out by, in the code, which specifically state that members of that board serve without compensation. So it's... So how do you change that? If city council wants to be, decides to be paid for more than just council meetings and planning commission meetings, it will have to decide what meetings or events that it wished the compensation to be applied to. And if that means that, for instance, I'll take the first one on here, is the City Beautiful Commission. So currently, the City Beautiful Commission, Section 2-222, says that members shall serve without compensation. So if the City Beautiful Commission meeting attendance by city council member is to be compensated, then we would need to revise that ordinance. And I threw out suggested language to say, to specifically change it to say, "Non-city council members" so serve because otherwise, you know, unless city council wanted to pay every member of that particular board. If it's just, if city council chooses to have the compensation applied to city council members, and when I say that, I mean, and mayor, and mayor pro temp, so all city council members, then I think that type of modification would do it for those other specific ordinances that exclude compensation. So trying to take you down the logical order. So if city council wants to do, change the way it is, that's the way to change it. So therefore, it would be set by resolution is compensation. So also in the packet then is I put together just a proposed, what such a resolution would look like. And it goes through the history of, you know, here's the charter, here's the compensation, blah, blah, blah. But then it says, then it says on here that resolved that city council would be paid per meeting attended for... And I listed out particular meetings. It could... You could have it open-ended, which I wouldn't want necessarily because it leads to, hey, should I get... You know, is this a compensable attendance or not? So if you laid them out, that would be, that would be preferred. And then it's, then it would list what the actual compensation per appearance would be. And again, I just put them all the same and I put in there because I heard at the last meeting someone discussing $100 per appearance. So that's what I put in, in the ordinance for discussion, or the resolution for discussion. And then just trying to figure out from an administrative standpoint, like how does that happen? You know, how does that work? Because, okay, you attended this one, you attended this one. Is this going to be paid? Because right now, I believe the payments are quarterly. So I tied that process to a quarterly cadence so that city council members would submit these, you know, hey, I was at this meeting, this meeting, this meeting. On a quarterly basis, then administration would process it, cut the check as you normally receive now for city council meetings. And then it would be, I suggested that it would be put into a quarterly, into a meeting packet to say, you know, like you do check registries, right? So instead of seeing a... I'll pick on the mayor. If there's a payment made to the mayor in the check registry, you'll know what that is, right? You'll know that that's for, you know, because you'll have attended six meetings that quarter, you know, city council meetings. So you get what I'm saying.
Transparency.
So at least there's transparent... Thank you for the word. Transparency so that there's no question as to, hey, was I supposed to get paid? Did I get paid for that or should we be paying for those appearances? So city council, it's up to you. Do you want to change how it is working now? And if you do want it changed, how do you want it changed? So this is at the request of city council, not prompted by administration.
Okay. Thank you. Also in our packet was some information regarding other cities. So city manager, Treasure Maggio, could someone take us through that as well?
It's right there in front of you, so they're all over the place.
So it's on page 74 in our packet?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Right. Oh, HR put it together.
Well, actually, Joellen's online here.
It was a number, so I... Sorry.
We presumed, yes.
Got it.
Yeah, that's it right there. So Joellen's on Zoom if she would like to say anything or I can read this list also. So let's see if she responds. Joellen, are you there? All right. So let's drive through this.
So it's on page 74 in the packet.
So that's where it talks about the Villager Rees, right? Jonesville, Ithaca, Chelsea, Towles?
It's got Birmingham, Berkeley, Clausen, Farmington, Ferndale, Frazier, Rose Point Farms, Rose Point Park, Harbor Woods, Mount Clemens, New Baltimore, Plymouth, Wicksom and Rochester Hills. It lists city council pay per meeting, mayor pay and compensated for other committees that they sit on and then some general notes. So I guess, did council... Have you guys seen this? I mean, I don't...
Yeah, it's in the pack.
Everybody through this.
My... Some of these, well, they say they're not paid. Let's say for Rochester Hills, they say compensated for other committees they sit on. They say yes. But, you know, for Frazier, they say compensated for other committees, no, but the city council gets $3,800 a year cap.
Some of it's salary.
Yeah. So some of it's salary. So, you know, they're taking into consideration they're going to meetings. So some of it is a... Yeah. So I thought it was interesting. Yeah, I think, and I'm glad that this is because we want to understand if it was no one gets paid a dime ever, that then I guess we would have to reconsider.
Mayor, that was kind of the point of this. It's apples and oranges, but you're right. If everybody said they don't get paid, that would have made it clear. It's not clear. It's... They're all over. Some are in salary, some are in...
That was a point. Yeah, it is. And then, yeah, Birmingham, I was confused about because I thought they were salary, but maybe. I don't know.
Okay. So obviously, this is a tough topic for, you know, for us to talk about our own compensation and talk about it publicly. So what I thought would be good is if we could just go down the line and I would like to hear from every council member your thoughts on it. I was trying to listen to what you said, City Attorney, and really what we're discussing and deliberating on is, A, do we want to get rid of the compensation committee? Do we want to get rid of how we've done it in the past? Secondly, do we think council should be paid for more meetings than just city council meetings? Thirdly, do we want to change the rate that council members get paid? You know, should we change the rate? And then fourth, the fourth item is, should we pay residents who sit on committees? Because there are committees where we are on and they are on and if we made a change, is that something? What's our view on it? So really four items and anything else that you want to talk about regarding council member compensation. Councilmember Sage, you're the lucky man on the right.
Outstanding. So I do believe, based on, it was good to see this comparative analysis of neighboring communities. I do believe we should be compensated for the meetings we attend, the ones that we are all selected, whether through our vote or the mayoral vote, all those boards, commissions, committees to serve on. I think we should be compensated for that. I also think everybody on, anybody that volunteers here in town should be compensated for that. Now, that's something I would defer to the budget process, absolutely, through goals and objectives. If we're focused strictly on our compensation, I would support being compensated for also serving on the other boards and commissions.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Jones?
So my thought is, yes, I do also agree that we should be compensated only for meetings on boards, commissions, not on going to events. And, you know, that's our choice to do that stuff. So it would just be the meetings that we are attending. And I think 100 is... I'm not... I'm okay if it's less than 100. So 100 or less is fine with me. My thought is, and I think I've told everybody this example, you know, we sit on, the three of us sit on Sister City, you know, three of us are getting paid to be there, or not getting paid to be there, three of us are getting paid to be there. I really look at Rochester Hills as the city to be using as our benchmark since we do so much together with them. I really look at Rochester Hills as the city to be using as our benchmark, since we do so much together with them. There was, we did this in, in Goals and Objectives already, fifty thousand dollars was put aside for us to get paid. We're halfway through the year now, we never voted on it, we never did it. So it was already in last year's budget, fifty thousand dollars for us. I, what I like about it that was added, that I had mentioned to city manager, is to opt out. So if people don't want to get paid, that is an option, just opt out then. And don't turn in the time card or whatever quarterly. I don't believe everyone on the committee of citizens should get paid. I don't think that was in the budget, we figured that it, it was that it was citizens, okay. To me, that could be debated. I think that's it.
Thank you. Council member Trent?
Yes, yes, it is a hard subject to say, hey, you know, but I have served as a volunteer for, I don't know, twenty years before I got on council, on multiple boards and other committees and other situations, and I chose that. So for that reason, I, if a, if a council member got paid and I didn't, I would, I would understand that. And, and, and I do like the opt-out option. I, and I also like revisiting this, because it's, I don't know, it's been twenty years. And it is, I guess, as to your point, Mayor Sylvia, because it's a tough subject to, you know, have the chicken being overseen by the wolf, or however you say it, you know, as my grandma would say. But, so I guess the wolf oversee the chicken house. So having said that, yeah, I think boards and commissions and, 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 and the amount of meetings that we go through and to, and the, and I guess there's a respect factor, when I thought, wow, I could, you know, I, you know, when I found out Sister City Committee as well, I'm on that, and I thought, found out, that's where it started. You're getting paid to, like, well, you know, you, no one else does in, on these boards either for, for Rochester. So that's my, my statement.
Thank you. Council member Houser?
Sure, so.
Deep in thought?
Yeah, well, because it's a tough subject when you're trying to consider this, and I, and again, speaking for myself, I didn't become a city council person for the pay, all right? Clearly, none of us are getting rich up here, and you're doing it for the public service. And I think that's ultimately what we're all here for. There is a value in the services we provide, and all of us have jobs, and we, you know, it goes beyond the Monday nights, or, you know, the planning commission meetings, and there is a considerable amount of time that we spend that's not seen. That being said, I would only be in favor of this because that opt-out language is in there. And I think it's up to every one of us to make that personal decision if we want to do it or not. I would likely not go beyond what I get compensated for up here on a daily, you know what I'm saying? Like, I would keep the status quo for me. If everyone else was, that's their decision, but for me personally, I would stick to what it is. And candidly, the, the bump up in rate, I'm fine with the current rate. I don't see any reason to adjust it upwards. I think it's, you know, again, it has to be commensurate with, with everything else. If we're going to expect departments and city services to, to tighten their belts, I think it's only incumbent on us to do the same. So I would be supportive of it, provided the opt-out language is in there, and I'm not necessarily in favor of an increase in the compensation.
Okay, thank you. I'll just continue down the line here. You know, I've been thinking about this a lot, there has been discussion, I know it is in our budget. I, I just see it a little differently. I just see it as, I just see it as such an honor that I get to serve on Rochester City Council, that whether I'm sitting across the table from a Rochester Hills council member, they don't get to serve in Rochester. They get to serve in Rochester Hills. So I, I'm not, I'm not looking to change the pay structure. I'm fine with the way it is. I'm also of the opinion that, yes, this is in our budget, but I'm also looking for ways to save some money in our budget, because I know we have other expenses that are going up. So again, I don't want to sound too altruistic on that, but that's my opinion. I, I just don't see a need to change the compensation. Mayor?
Yes, so I've, I have served for twenty-five years without the compensation. But I also agree with people that I think, out of a respect level, I would support that. I think it hasn't changed in twenty-five years, I think it's time to update that. I think if you don't choose to do it, you can opt out of it, I think that's a great thing. So if you don't want to do it, opt out. And I also think, you know, there, there's a lot of time, and I was thinking about this, that, you know, maybe we'd get more people to want to serve if we open it up and have some compensation for people's time, as opposed to making this, you know, a place for people who just feel like they have to volunteer their time entirely. So I, I would support this. I think the hundred dollars is fair, and so I would support that. Thank you.
Council member King?
I don't think my view has changed. I, I do like that there's an opt-out language. I, I don't really see a need to increase it. I think the, the reason I got involved is because I care deeply about the city. It's where, you know, my family grew up, I wanted to get involved and to give back, and I think that's why a lot of people are doing it. And I also, I don't want to be paid to serve on a nonprofit board. I don't think we should pay people to serve on, like, a city beautiful where, you know, we have a very small budget for that, you know, that group, and they're just looking to do things to enhance the city. So I, I do think there's areas where I don't think we should be paying people. I might be a little bit in the minority though.
Okay.
No, I would.
Council member Trent?
I think I said that, I didn't, I wasn't in favor of paying the.
You did.
I did, okay.
You did.
I know, I know, I didn't know.
You just wanted to make sure that that was stated.
And another thing I'd like to say is that what Mayor Pro Tem Bixson was talking about, was that, you know, if you can afford, I mean, there could be somebody in this community that, you know, they might want to run, but they can't afford it. They don't have the, 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 the paychecks and the jobs that we have, including me. So I, and I do love serving. I can't tell you how many things I've served on here. And I did it freely, never asked for a dime, and I feel that me asking for this doesn't mean I love this city any less than anybody that's going to opt out. And I hope that that is clear, that I'm not the red-haired stepchild, I used to be red-haired, yeah. But, and I was a stepchild. But do you understand what I'm saying?
Any, any other thoughts from council?
I think that's a really good point, though, that you make, about there might be more people that would want to get involved.
Yeah, and, and let's say childcare, let's say a younger family that can't afford childcare. I think you probably can, but, or your husband can take care. I mean, what happens if that person came along? Where is our heart for the people like in the seniors that can't afford the forty-six hundred dollars, that live in this community, and they don't make the salaries we make? And I know some of those people, and I think that we need to get past the fact of what we make in our lives to think about, there are people in this community that are middle-class and even, you know, less than middle-class, because that middle-class amount used to be thirty and forty, and now it's up to sixty and eighty.
Thank you, council member King. Jones, you're Jones.
What was it for a minute there?
You're Sarah.
I could be King today. I, I also, I, I, yeah, I love to serve. So I have been serving on nonprofits since two thousand and eighteen, or something like, two thousand and eight. So it has nothing to do with loving to serve or not loving to serve, I just want to clarify that. There are three committees that are paid for, the ZBA, the planning, and one other. So there isn't even, within, we're deciding that the planning commission people get paid, but we, we don't on other, you know, I sit on five, I think, so I'm pretty busy. And to Christian's point, it isn't just the committee meeting. I mean, we spend hours, we all talk a lot. We're spending hours talking and doing behind-the-scenes and doing, you know, I'm on the bylaws committee for Raya. So I don't just meet with Raya, I meet on the bylaws, I'm doing the brochure for Raya with Marilyn, there's lots of hours involved. To me, this comes down to respect of our time. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So council? You gonna make a motion?
I guess we make a motion to.
Um, sure, I would love some public comment on this. Thank you. I'm, I'm still a rookie at this, so you'll forgive me.
Very good job.
Thank you.
I'm Carl Rainey, I'm from Parkdale in Rochester, and I've been along, longer than Bixson, I guess, or Steve, or Stu, sorry. And the system seemed to work for years, fine. The mayor would get a bump over what the council people would, and people wanted to serve. And being a council member or the mayor was with a small stipend, that was what people wanted to do. It wasn't for the money. And to spread it, for one, you talked earlier about breaking precedent. I mean, you're breaking a precedent right here, eliminating the compensation commission, and putting the salary into the council's hand. I think that's a bad one, because who's to say next year is, well, let's make it two thousand dollars, you know, for a meeting? What's to stop you? And to have people say that this is going to be a living wage for them, that's ridiculous. They can go and become mayor at a strong mayor government, or a strong council government. And, you know, I, I just don't understand this, you know. I looked at all the campaign literature for this past election, and I talked to a number of people. And that one person that I talked to said, a major issue for me is raising council salaries. And the last thing I'll say is, to have you say, well, it's okay for me to get paid, but the people that actually volunteer, that probably know more than you do about the committee that they're on, not get paid, that's, that's elitism, in my book. So I would recommend not doing this at all, and that's it, thank you.
Carl, I appreciate it, thank you for being here. Is there any other public comment on this item? Council?
So what is the direction now? Because it seems like there's three different things.
So we've had discussion, so is there any motion or, or not?
And the motion would be to do three different things, correct attorney?
So I guess the first, first action would be, do you want to, because the, the first thing that would have to happen would be to eliminate the, the compensation commission.
And just to clarify, they haven't met in like five or six years, correct? So it's not really even a functioning.
I, I thought we appointed people.
We appoint them, and so I would say, and they have met.
I heard they had met in like five years.
Well, I remember hearing a report at council from, from the commission, so at some point in time they met.
There's not, I don't think, we were talking about appointing some new people, and we never did because of this conversation.
Right.
So there is.
Okay, so that's within the past year, but I'm talking about in the past four or five years they have met.
I don't, I don't think they have. Have they?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
It's a very active, yes. Okay, so back to, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
So it's, it's, a motion is what, what you want. So there are four items that we discussed. Do we want to keep the compensation committee or not? If we get rid of the compensation committee, then we have to take some other action. And then we would have to clarify, what do we want council to get paid for? What meetings, at what rate? So we would have to do the job of the compensation committee, and then, so the rate, and then lastly, does it include any residents? So a motion would have to reflect those items.
Council member King? I think we, I think, I said this last time, I think we need the compensation committee. I think we need a group of individuals that aren't the ones getting paid to, to make the decision. They can review the information that's available, you know, based on what other communities are paying. They can review what people in the community are saying, as well as council members decide the arguments, and I think that they should be the ones making the recommendations. I don't feel, I would not support us making the changes for ourselves.
But we can't do, so we can't do any of this without having.
Eliminating the compensation committee. So that, that action has to be the first part, keeping or eliminating the compensation committee. Council member Trent?
That then puts us, then that puts us back to where we were four months ago, when we talked about this, like.
We would have to appoint.
And is it every five years, or is it, like, when would they meet?
Well, it's like any other committee, I mean, we just, we need to get people on the committee, have them have a meeting. I mean, we formed CAT committees, we've, we've formed all sorts of committees. You know, we, we are, we are fully capable of forming committees.
Oh, we are.
Yes, we are.
Adam, mayor, can I help, so if we kept the compensation committee, we could have input to that committee to say, would you consider adding extra pay for the things? Let them make that decision, it takes you out of it from the top, that could be part of their role, getting information, what, what would be the request? So I, you don't have to get rid of the compensation committee, they could just be informed of what you're thinking, and let them make that decision, which would not eliminate. Yeah, and survey the other communities, we could show them all that stuff.
Council member Houser?
So, and again, I, I, I remember that conversation, because I also said, I don't feel the comp, and it was Ms. Turner, I think, had volunteered to be on the, you know, we had gotten some names from people. And that was my understanding, is that they were going to do it, but we had also had this, and this was the input for everything, and that's why.
So what happened?
I don't feel comfortable bumping up the rate. I understand about the opt-out, I understand about this, but that was my understanding, is the compensation committee was going to determine whether or not this was acceptable.
So city manager, what happened?
We didn't, you guys never made.
We, we never, we never made any, we never took any action, okay?
All right, given the blend of all the opinions.
Council member Sage?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I didn't make a motion.
I will make a motion.
No, oh, I did.
We are currently compensated fifty dollars to come to a council meeting.
Right.
All right, so I would like two things to happen. In Goals and Objectives, I would like this issue brought up for everyone serving on a committee, board or commission, and that will be a line item that we get to vote on with administration, to help provide direction. But as far as the motion tonight, if you also serve, because you're not volunteering there, we all serve at the pleasure of either the mayor or this council as well, on all these other functioning boards, commissions, and committees. Keep the compensation the same, but we get paid to do those functions as well. If you want to opt out, opt out, I have no problem with that. But we don't need to have an increase in rate, that's fine.
So your motion is for fifty dollars per council member?
Do we need to dissolve the commission to do that?
Attorney?
You, you would, because right now, your compensation is per meeting for city council and planning commission.
Okay. Do you have a motion, council member Sage, or you?
That wa, that was my motion, that we would get compensated at the same rate.
But it would have to eliminate the compensation committee.
That we would have to eliminate the compensation.
Okay, so that is your motion, eliminate the compensation committee and pay council members fifty dollar per meeting, regardless of what meeting they're at.
Right, the ones we're appointed to, right? The ones we're appointed to, now, if you're going to ribbon-cutting, no.
Yeah, not ribbon-cutting, just meetings you're appointed to.
Meetings you're appointed to.
Okay.
And then that's, Pro Tem is more, mayor is more.
Right.
Aren't we getting compensated more than that for city coun, isn't it like sixty-two dollars or fifty-seven or something? What are we compensated right now?
I think it's sixteen.
I don't even know what it is.
It hadn't changed in twenty-five years.
Do we, do you know how we're compensated? I don't know either, I feel like we're voting on a number that is.
This is an entertaining meeting to watch from home.
I bet this is for.
I think we have to hold.
Seventy for mayor, sixty-five for mayor pro tem, and then sixty-five for council.
Okay, okay, so city clerk, just clarify the current rates.
What is that?
So if you could clarify those again, please?
Seventy-five for mayor, seventy for mayor pro tem, and then sixty-five for council members, for the two meetings each month. So it's twenty-four meetings for the year.
Okay.
Okay, and so council member Sage, you have a motion on the floor?
I do.
I can't vote on that motion.
I just want to point out, I didn't make a motion before that. I started out saying, I'll make, I want to make a motion not to eliminate the compensation committee.
Oh, that's right.
So I don't know if we need to.
You did the negative, yes, yes.
I don't know if we have to vote on that.
So city clerk, could I have some advice on protocol here?
Neither motion has a second yet.
Right.
So I think for clarity, then council member King's motion should be, proceed, whether it gets a second or not. But at least it needs. But at least it needs to be acted on.
All right, so Councilmember King, what was your motion?
I make a motion not to eliminate the compensation committee. Let's staff the compensation committee, provide them with our kind of thoughts and feedback, allow them to do the research, and come make a recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember King.
I, gosh, I need to ask a question before.
A second would come first.
I have to wait till a second.
You have a.
I will second that.
Okay, second by Councilmember Hauser, question from.
So I guess in the compensation committee, I, I would like to have an understanding of why some committees are paid for and some are not. So that would be part of the discussion. And if the others aren't getting, then none should be getting. So I would just, I, yeah.
Okay. And so compensation committee is appointed by council or the mayor? Hold on, I got it right here.
I, I do too. I actually brought my sheet with me.
Send it to me.
While, while you're looking at that, the timing is.
It must be the mayor. No, it's, it's a mayor appointment. I have.
Okay, it's a mayor appointment. All right, I got it. I got the assignment. Okay.
They, they meet in odd years.
It doesn't say that.
Yes, it does.
Anything about odd years.
Yes, it does.
So January one.
I'll find, I'll find a.
Excellent.
Because at least in what I have here, it says.
It's a state.
It's a state.
It says five-year term, five members.
I'll, I'll find a.
That doesn't say, that doesn't also then include that it, it's limited to meeting in the odd years. That's under the state law.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, so I, I, I will vote no on this because I'm going to support Councilmember Sage's motion if this doesn't pass.
Okay. All right, so we have a, we have a motion and we have a second, which is to keep the compensation committee staffed at early January, have a meeting, bring it back. City clerk.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
No.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
No.
Trent.
Um, it's to keep, that's.
Not eliminate.
Not eliminate the committee.
It's to keep the compensation committee and then.
Allow the committee to.
You want to vote no.
No, I wanted to vote yes. I'm just confused. I got totally bungfuzzled up here about what the question was.
And your vote is to keep the compensation committee? Because I did not realize the, I mean, it's a state law.
Okay.
So then your vote is no.
No, her vote is yes.
Her vote is yes. So the motion passes.
Yes.
To keep the compensation.
Five to two.
Motion passes five to two. Keep the compensation committee. We're staffing it up.
And what, is it citizens that go on that then?
Citizens.
Citizens, okay.
Citizens.
And there seems to be one already that had reached out.
Yep.
There were actually three.
Yep, there's three.
Yeah.
Or Murphy, I think.
So they're going to meet in January.
We could advertise it again and.
Yep, please advertise it again, public. We're, we're looking for some wonderful people who want to serve.
To be on.
All right, thank you, everyone. That was a tough conversation. I knew it was going to be, but I appreciate everyone's honesty and thoughtfulness.
Mayor.
Yes?
Not to interrupt, just so the record is clear. So section two dash two sixty-three discusses the meetings. And it says the compensation committee, commission shall meet for no more than 15 sessions every odd number of year.
Okay.
And shall make a determination, this is helpful too, determination within 45 calendar days after its first meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And city attorney?
Yes.
Could, and maybe you do or do not know this, could a compensation committee make a recommendation that would be retroactive? Knowing that there is money in the budget this year?
That would be, I, I will say, shooting from the hip, no. Because if, assuming that it would be an increase, you can't give additional compensation for services already performed.
So it's different than a union contract?
It is.
Okay.
Because that's all, that's correct.
Okay.
Because it's not public officials either.
Good question.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to reports from boards and commissions, we have just one from the planning commission.
That is me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So our meeting was on December 2nd, 2024. We had two projects before us. One was a request, payment in lieu of parking. That was at 203 East University. That passed. And then the other project was at 339 East Street, which was a request for site plan approval, three-story mixed-use development. This is at the site of the former Moon River Soap Company. They had requested site plan approval and payment in lieu of parking. That both passed. The payment in lieu of parking was for 30 spots. They paid $30,000. They will pay that immediately, therefore that will not come before city council. And the second was the approved, the planning commission approved the site plan approval. So that project will move forward once it goes through with engineering and development with the city. I will also note that at the conclusion of the hearing, I brought up to my colleagues on planning commission that city council had encouraged the planning commission to step up its efforts with respect to the master plan and the timing of that. So at the conclusion of that meeting, Mr. Band and I and the other members talked about a joint meeting in January with planning commission and city council to discuss the master plan and kind of do a level set and identify where we are currently, what is outstanding, what needs to be finished, and then more importantly, a timeline to bring back to city council to say, okay, these are the steps that the planning commission is going to take in order to get that kind of back on track and, and make it more of a completed document. So that was the planning commission meeting on December 2nd, 2024.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So really, really highlighting, bringing, getting, bringing up the speed to get this master plan implemented.
That is absolutely correct.
Great. Councilmember Trent.
I'm not sure if this is a question or not. It's a statement regarding what the 329.
I have no idea what you're talking about. Go right ahead.
You said, do you have any questions?
I know exactly where you're going. Go right ahead. Yes.
I do appreciate what you just said. And I am excited that the city council and planning commission will have a joint meeting to align the master plan and zoning. And I know how seriously and how hard the planning commission does, considers each new development project, which I am saying is not to second guess them, but the newly improved development at 329 East Street was a test case for adding a new retail and office structure into the CBD, which is a central business district. It came to light that there were multiple meetings with this project. And what came to my attention, that both the developer and the planning commission would function better with having tighter and clearer standards in this instance with Article 21, Section 21, 2118B, but I'd say the whole thing, article, that the developer doesn't have to waste their valuable time with cost adding up to try to figure out what is acceptable and what is not. And trying to preserve and enhance the character of the central business district and keeping it a hallmark town while allowing for appropriate growth and development updates to the zoning ordinance can focus on design scale and architectural consistency. Other towns do this. Other cities do this. It is not illegal. While reviewing the zoning, we can look at sustainability practices as well. I am one person with GSI, Green Storm Water Infrastructure. There was a head nod from Councilman Hauser, who was on the planning commission and council members to have Jim Nash, Water Resources Commissioner, come back. And he's an expert on sustainability and modern development practices who came to speak with us. So he said he would bring somebody who would give us some more information about green storm water infrastructure. As we look to the future, our city should prioritize strategies that addresses environmental resilience, infrastructure efficiency, and the evolving needs for our community, which could include the amount of green space for residential infill housing. Because there is no green space allotted or identified now for infill housing or residential housing. Other cities such as Southfield, Warren.
Southfield.
Warren, and Grand Rapids and more are adapting and updating outdated zoning. So that was what I had to say about that. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Trent. Moving on to general, do you have a question on planning commission?
No, I'm, you just, I don't think we did receipt of the check register report.
Okay, let's do that one.
I don't know if we go back one.
Absolutely. You guys are keeping me on track. Okay, check register, council, any questions? Discussion on the check register? Thank you. Let's go to general and miscellaneous, city clerk.
Just one correction with the compensation amounts. Marcy and Joellen let me know that I was $5 off. So it's mayor is 70, mayor pro tem is 65, and council members are paid 60.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. City manager.
Just congratulations to the whole team for this weekend. Unfortunately, I had to go out of town with my mother-in-law, but missed the parade. And my favorite, Chris Kringle, and I shouldn't say unfortunately. I was glad to spend time with her, so the, but yeah, unbelievable, great weather. Maggie, congratulations, great parade. Thank you all for being, participating in there. People enjoy seeing our public officials and that. Chris Kringle, the expansion, it was still crowded, but we got more vendors in there. And Christie wanted me to tell you that the Strudel person, that is my favorite reason to go there. A lot of peoples, they're in Pennsylvania, they're a little bit elderly. There was a wicked snowstorm for three days. Their state law says you can't take a truck that they need to drive, the box truck, on their highways. They could not get out of there. So they're despised. So there was a big gap there in the middle of the Strudel folks. And they literally were told by their state, you can't leave the state with that truck. There's no way around it. So that's why the Strudel folks weren't there. But congratulations, DPW Police Fire. Thank you to our outside agencies, the Chief George God for Security. Everybody felt safe. I think everybody knew that we had the right presence, but not overbearing. So, and it looks like the vendors did a great job. Christie, in her little store there, they sold like $4,500 with the things at $1 to $10 for sweatshirts and stuff. So that just told you how much people were fired up for the system, so, through the season. So congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. It wa, it was an amazing weekend. Amazing. Thank you. City attorney?
I love my mother-in-law. She's watching.
I, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the city services for the parade. I thought it was excellent and very safe.
It's great.
Councilmember Jones?
I went to Gifts for All God's Children, who works at the Congregational Church. And their operation is absolutely amazing, how many kids that they outfit and what they do there. I would like to throw up to council, not this year at this point, but maybe we do a volunteer thing at one of the organizations during the holidays? Or maybe adopt a family. Might be something we want to consider. I also am working with a couple of people on some serious kids in need right now. And we have an unbelievable amount of homeless students in Rochester. It's surprising to people, I think. And so at RCS, Leslie Sheldon, who sits on the Raya Board, is working with some very sad cases. And she said, if anyone wants to donate Amazon, Target, or Meyer gift cards to help some of these kids out, that would be lovely.
So Raya has families that, that need children?
Leslie sits on Raya, but she works for Rochester Community Schools. Her role.
But how do people reach out? Because there are so many people that are looking for people to help.
Leslie Sheldon would be good.
Okay.
At RCS or myself, and I will get the gift cards to her. So if anybody wants to help with that, there's a terrible case right now that she's working on that. We are helping at Raya, actually. And then I met today with the superintendent of schools, Mr. Russo, to talk about the admin building. And there's still hope that that building will remain in Rochester as it is, so.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping.
I mean, it's a long haul. They did hire an outside company, think Plant Moran, actually, that is looking at all the buildings that RCS owns. They're doing an analysis of what they have and what they could do, and the population trends, and what's going to happen, and what schools they need, and their space, and, and that's included in the study. So we'll see.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping that, that topic moving.
Remain hopeful.
Yes, I'd like to thank the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce Foundation for continuing to put on a wonderful parade. And it is a community effort with the city of Rochester and Rochester Hills providing police and fire assistance and more. But I did attend a sustainability conversations conference last week with Oakland County. And 20 communities attended, and I was proud to say we were one. 16 elected officials attended and 11 county, Oakland County departments. That we discussed and we're, we had presentations on stormwater management and discussed the increased flooding in southeast Michigan. SimCOG is doing a southeast Michigan flood risk management study to keep our waters clean and safe. They had a presentation on materials management session. And they talked about organic waste and composting in other cities and what other cities do. And I plan on learning more from Royal Oak, because it was one of the benchmark cities. They also discussed funding sources that are available. And I have a, I have, I'm going to speak with somebody at Oakland County about those funding sources. And they also do free audits. And last but not least, I'm proud to say that Rochester Pollinators won a $5,000 award for the city of Rochester's first mini forest that will be an extension of the Sugar Maple Grove in the spring. And it will be a quiet place with at least one bench, possibly two benches, for people to come and enjoy and relax. We're going to be on the cutting edge of this new way of managing public lands. And this was provided by First Stink, First State Bank, Banksgiving that, that honors, it's an award system that honors the charitable organizations who work so hard on a day-to-day basis to make our communities a wonderful place to live. And I want to thank everybody who voted for Rochester Pollinators. And, okay, one more thing. We recently, the Rochester Pollinators, working with the city of Rochester and City Beautiful Commission, turned in our report today, the report today for 25 projects that, that the Rochester Pollinators did with City Beautiful Commission to win another third, or third time for, to, to be the monarch champion city through the National Wildlife Federation. And that includes DPW, CBC, DAR, and a list of other partners.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Trent.
You're welcome.
Very briefly, again, thank you for everyone who participated and helped put the parade together yesterday. It was wonderful to walk with all my colleagues. And the city was packed all week, and I saw the mayor downtown. And I took a picture of that closed Strudel stand too, because that's specifically, I went down there and it was closed. Finally, I want to thank Anthony and Marcy and everyone else, and the staff, for the work that they did with the audit. And there's a reason those numbers look so good. It's because of the hard work that the city does to make it that way. Okay, those things just don't appear and it just doesn't happen. It's because conscious decisions were made by everyone in the city to align ourselves in a way that we want to succeed. And so Marcy and Anthony and everyone, thank you very much for all the work that you've done to put us on such solid financial footing. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Wrapping up here, I do have a couple of appointments to make. Appointing Mayor Pro Tem to the OPC Board, the Budget Committee, and the Asset Management Committee. You were, but I figured I should clarify it just with title changes. Let's, let's be official. Let's be official. Let's be official. There you go. Also, the DPW director position is posted. It's out there. So we have already two applicants, so we'd like at least 10 applicants. That would be great. I also wanted to continue to congratulate everyone for an amazing weekend. Noticed, Councilmember Trent, that you saw the first community churches float, which won the, the, the parade float competition. It was amazing. They built a miniature downtown Rochester with little lights. And I just don't know where that float's going to go for the rest of the year, but it was spectacular. So congratulations to them. The window contest happened. Snow and stroll is happening. And right now, we can still vote on the neighborhood light fight. So check out Alice, Helen, Ludlow, Wesley, and First Street and vote for your favorites until the 15th.
That's right.
It's that time of year where the accolades start rolling in for Rochester. We were number five in best Christmas towns in Michigan. There was a couple others that came in, so exciting times in Rochester. Sunday is PJs and pancakes. So that is, I think, the.
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, not Sunday. 12:12. PJs and pancakes. And lastly, I just wanted to thank my Woodside Church family. They sent amazing flowers and a whole basket of goodies congratulating me. And it's just wonderful to have that support. So thank you to them for doing that. And then.
Madam Mayor, just a quick one.
Yes.
It's kind of a wrap-up with the cold weather. We went ahead and took care of eight cats.
Oh, that's right.
That were trapped, neutered, and returned.
Yep.
Seventeen kittens. Eleven of them have found great homes. Somebody contacted me last week for two more, so that's 13. So there's four more kittens. Great Christmas presents.
Anybody wants a kitten?
They've all been taken care of.
Okay.
If anybody's interested, call me. I'll put them in touch with the right people. And we will continue to try to do some targeted trapping for some of the cats. We'll be working in spot areas along Castell and our area. And then I'll be contacting the members of council to have. And then I'll be contacting the members of council to have a meeting early in next year to put together our plan for the springtime, which is going to take care of education and working on the next phases to keep the process moving forward. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I, we had that email, and I knew we wanted an update from the CCC cat committee.
Mayor, I want to say one more thing.
Yes?
Sorry. One more thing, and I'm done. I just want to mention, I'm sitting here pondering all the discussions we had tonight. And I did come in with a certain thought process, even on the SAD, and then also on compensation, and how much I appreciate working with the council that can share their thoughts and sometimes change my thoughts. So I do, I really appreciate working with this council, and it's my last meeting because I won't be here next week, so happy holidays. I just want to say how thankful I am to be on the council and working with such great people, so. Yes.
You're welcome. It is, it is a great council, very collaborative, it's good. With that, I believe we have an agenda item to go into closed session with no intent to return.
Additional public comment?
Oh, but I would love any additional public comment before we have that. Brian, is there anyone online that would like to make a public comment?
Thank you, Mayor, there are no callers.
Thank you, thank you, Brian, it was good to see you at the parade.
Yeah. Hey, good to see you.
On the left side, yes.
On the left side. I saw Jason over there, everybody was there. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to go into closed session, not to return.
Motion by Hauser.
I'll second.
Second by Trent. City clerk, please.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage left at nine nineteen, and Trent.
Yes.